Guthertz up, she has two amendments, I have two amendments in front of me Senator Guthertz. Okay. She doesn't want anyone to pirate those amendments. Yeah, she doesn't want anyone to know. Senator Guthertz, the microphone is yours. And the floor. I have two in front of me. Okay, let's start with the ones that are in front of me. I have, I have either this modernization or right sizing or this temporary moratorium. Which one do you want to go? Okay, Senator.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, this amendment is co-sponsored by myself and my dear colleague Senator Frank Blas. As you know, in the last budget go around, twenty-seven zero four, we incorporated into that budget the modernization commission portion and also the right sizing commission portion. And although these two very important initiatives did become law, we have sat down together and felt that it was important to combine them into one. To make it more administratively feasible for the governor to initiate this important activity to look at how we can improve our public sector through modernization initiatives and through right sizing initiatives. So what we have before us is an amendment to, uh, chapter V one miscellaneous provisions which would basically be titled Modernization and Right Sizing Commission or COMRI. COMRI twenty-one. Twenty-one is for the twenty-first century. It incorporates the essential elements of the two entities and merge them into one. And our communication with the governor's office, specifically Mr. George Bombas, they are looking forward to this merger so they can begin the process of appointing the members to the COMRI commission. So I ask the support of my colleagues in endorsing this. Thank you.
Thank you very much Senator. If there's no comment, no objection, okay. Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Senator Guthertz, continue.
Yes, thank you. Now, my second, uh, presentation for today is on an initiative that would establish a moratorium on the issuance of new qualifying certificates. Now, this is a continuation of the initiative that my colleague Senator Ben Pangolin sponsored earlier. As you know, the governor took ombuds with that bill that we passed. And this takes into consideration some of the governor's objections. So this section would be a new section to chapter V one under miscellaneous provisions. It would establish a temporary moratorium on the issuance of new qualifying certificates. But this provision would not apply to the captive insurance companies writing risk outside of Guam or a risk in which coverage is currently not available on Guam. And would also not apply to qualifying certificate applications received by the Guam Economic Development Commerce Authority prior to October one, two thousand and seven. And these were part of the governor's objection to the bill that this legislature passed. So I ask my colleagues to support this. Also, please keep in mind, Mr. Chairman, that you have included in our budget proposal for zero eight a provision which would impanel the tax commission. And the review of the qualifying certificates, I would hope would be part of their, the program to see if it's working and maybe how we can alter it to make it work better, would be part of the mission of the tax commission. So I ask my colleagues to support this amendment. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much Senator Guthertz. On the Guthertz amendment, is there any comment Senator Espaldon?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I, you know, in theory, I, I, I agree with placing a moratorium on new qualifying certificates. However, you know, in the last session when we addressed this, and I did vote for that temporary moratorium, there were, uh, the, uh, the, the good author of that, of that amendment, or excuse me, of that, was it amendment or bill, of that amendment, basically placed within that moratorium certain specific, uh, guidelines on what has to hap- or what's going to happen because we're placing the moratorium. And that's basically to create a study, a group to study, you know, the effectiveness and as well as which, which areas we should perhaps continue granting QC's as well as perhaps making recommendations on which areas we should be eliminating QC's from. And I was for that concept. Now, one of the biggest problems I had with, with that, even though I voted for it, was that there was no definitive date in which the moratorium would then expire and then we, we, we do come back with, uh, with the qualifying certificates. Because I think this, this is, uh, an area that we do need to, we do need to keep qualifying certificates. But again, it needs to be contained in looking forward to what industries we're trying to attract and establish on this island. This doesn't do that. And again, it, it doesn't, it doesn't lay out any, any kind of, uh, once we place a moratorium, then what happens? We, we, we place a moratorium for the sake of placing a moratorium? Is that what it is and not bring it back at all? Or, or, you know, does it, does it create any kind of a, a, a group, a work, a working group to, to really examine and study, uh, the, the QC program and which direction we should go? This doesn't do that. So I do have a problem with this and, uh, you know, I would love to, to see, to see it, you know, more reflect what was, what was introduced and eventually vetoed by the governor with a certain timeline in terms of when will this moratorium be lifted and under what conditions. Uh, so I, I, at this point in time, I object to, to, to this amendment.
Okay. On the, on the Guthertz amendment, are there any other speakers?
Mr. Chairman?
Senator Juan Pat. Senator, we'll get, we'll get back to, uh, again, once all speakers have, uh, have been allowed the, the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Senator Juan Pat. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, you know, I, I agree with the previous speaker. Uh, and I, and I think that, you know, in order to try to amend the amendment, of course, to include that, we're going to need some time. But, uh, I'd just like to speak briefly on the, the moratorium. I mean, the, the moratorium, uh, I, I realize, I mean, the temporary moratorium is, is, of course, can almost be like endless. But, uh, it doesn't, definitely our decision today never, uh, we can never prohibit the decision of, you know, the next legislature so that means, of course, other legislatures can come back, right back, uh, again, next term to go ahead and, and, and lift that moratorium. But I think what maybe we should do here is that on this temporary moratorium, yes, is actually maybe put a, um, a sunset date. And I'm thinking that now, of course, the request is for the moratorium only because of our financial, you know, crisis that we're in right now. And I think when, uh, if everyone is correct and we're going to use, of course, the date in which they're saying that, uh, things will be brighter and better and monies will be floating all over the island. So, uh, if, and, and maybe that will be the time then to set the sunset. And I'm wondering if my colleagues would be, uh, you know, willing to, to accept that the moratorium then will expire in the year twenty fourteen. Because that's when they say everything is going to be great. Uh, I don't know if any one of you read the article in Hawaii right now where it says businesses, um, are invited to come to invade Guam. That was the title of that, uh, that article in Hawaii. Basically telling businesses that, uh, go to Guam because there's definitely going to be a lot of money. So these individuals are coming already because they know they're going to make money. So they're not coming because they're going to get a qualifying certificate. So, I mean, they know that there's a lot of work to be done and a lot of monies to be made here. So those are the businesses that would not need that. So I would like to, to, well, I'd like to put in then two amendments. But I, the other I need to pull out, basically, the parameters that define specifically what it is that they should do. But the second amendment that I like, but I have to write that or pull it out.
You want to take a minute recess for your?
Okay, yes, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Take a minute recess. Pat had the floor. You have, you have, Senator Juan Pat. If there are no other speakers in the amendment, we can go to the, to the author of the amendment. Are there any other speakers on the amendment? Okay, Senator Juan Pat, have you completed your dis-? So Senator Juan Pat, uh, again, you have the opportunity for the final statement.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, what we've done is, uh, in consultation with my colleagues, they provided really very good input. Uh, I revised the proposed amendment. You all have copies before you. Basically, the change incorporates the, uh, a, a, a specific timeframe in which this
I don't have it.
must be done. You should have it. They just, they were just passing it out.
I don't have it.
He's coming.
Okay, so.
It incorporates the concern of Senator Espaldon and also, uh, my other colleagues, Mr. Chairman.
So, what I'd like, I think what happens, this amendment to the amendment is substantial in-
Maybe just withdraw that amendment and introduce this one. I'd like to withdraw the original amendment and replace it with this one.
Oh. There, there's different lan- similar language, but there's difference.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, may I read the amendment?
So you're withdrawing the, the first amendment?
Yes.
There's no objection to the amendment withdrawal, okay?
And I'm replacing it with another one, and there's a slight modification on the one that I passed out. Basically, Mr. Chairman, the language is as follows. There shall be a temporary moratorium placed on the issuance of new qualifying certificates pursuant to chapter fifty-eight twelve GCA and the Guam Economic Development Commerce Authority shall not issue any new qualifying certificates. And this is a line I'm adding, or, uh, a renewal of existing certificates. Or renewal of existing certificates. Or renew, or renew existing certificates.
Or renew existing.
Or renew existing certificates, period. B, uh, the moratorium shall not apply to the captive insurance companies writing risk outside of Guam or risk in which coverage is currently not available on Guam. And C, in the absence of any other process specifically enacted to review and make recommendations on the qualifying certificate program, the Tax Review Commission shall review and make such recommendations and report to the legislature, insert on or before May thirty-first, two thousand and eight. On or before May thirty-first, two thousand and eight.
Okay.
That's the only change, Mr. Chairman.
On the Guthertz amendment, no comment? Any objection? No objection?
And we have-
Senator Blas, did you have an objection? Folks, uh, we are now in the Guthertz amendment. I'm saying, there, you had your hand raised. He's also on a telephone call. Senator Blas? Oh, I'm sorry. We are, Senator Blas? Your clock is ticking.
Thank you. I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair, uh, and I appreciate the, uh,
We are, just to let you know, you raised your hand, but we already adopted, um, the, 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 on or, on renewal, renewal, on renewed existing certificates, we are now the amendment, amendment.
On the main amendment.
Yes.
On the main amendment. And, 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 thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chair. I appreciate again, um, uh, you know, the, the author of this bill. And, and I, and I, I can, I recognize the intent of it. I also need to recognize that there was a previous bill that had been passed and then also subsequently vetoed by the governor. And I would appreciate if, as a result of that, I would like to be able to entertain and then recognize and, and, and look into this matter based on the veto bill and the message from the governor reference to that bill. So, uh, Mr. Chair, I'm going to have to raise an, an objection to this amendment.
Okay, so we're going to have a vote. All in favor of the Guthertz amendment, a show of hands? One, two, three, four. Show of hands, please. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Going once? Okay, going twice? I'm gonna, you better run in right now. Uh, uh, I'm giving, going, come on, folks. Uh, come on. Is he, is he, uh, okay, okay. Okay, he's coming, okay. Okay, let's do it one more time. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Motion, amendment carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. I have one more, Mr. Chairman. And, uh, this, this would add a new section to chapter V one. And, uh, it's, uh, in reference to, uh, section one oh one oh eight, chapter ten of four GCA. And basically, it deals with, uh, appropriate employee units under Pemra. Discovered in our research that, uh, there's some confusion as to certain categories of employees that can be part of a bargaining unit. So this, uh, section would clarify that, Mr. Chairman. No, it's, it's the, uh,
Wait a minute.
The one with our initials on it.
Wait, there, okay, okay.
The ones that have our initials on it that bite the hand.
Continue, Senator.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So it's, it's very clear in the, uh, language what we're doing. We're just adding a statement that says, uh, in other than clerical positions and non-supervisory employees. Meaning that non-supervisory employees may participate in a bargaining unit. The clarification is needed because we have been informed, uh, through the department administration and one of the bargaining units in the, in the island that certain non-supervisory employees are being prevented to organize a bargaining unit in their department.
Okay, okay. On the Guthertz amendment, any comment? Any objection? Okay, amendment carries. Is that it? Senator Guthertz, that's it for you? I think the next we had was, um, Senator Espaldon? I have two amendments in front of me.
I only have two amendments that I'd like to, uh, to make. Uh, the first one deals with appropriation that was given to the Department of Agriculture for fifty thousand dollars in Public Law twenty-eight seventy-four. And basically, the amendment reads, "The funds appropriated to the Department of Agriculture in Public Law twenty-eight seventy-four for the sole purpose of hiring an Assistant Attorney General to assist in the prosecution of illegal hunting and terrestrial violations shall remain available to the department until fully expended." Uh, Mr. Chair, i- in essence, there, there are some cases out there outstanding, uh, for illegal hunting and, and terrestrial violations. But because of, uh, uh, the lack of funding for, for legal services, and, and again, I believe they've made arrangements through the Assistant Attorney General, uh, to, to basically just, uh, keep those funds in place and allow the Department of Agriculture to use the funds that were appropriated to them in, in twenty-eight seventy, dash seventy-four. And it's a, it's a, there's no nominees involved. I understand from the department that the, that appropriation is still intact. It's still there. And they were just, they, uh, they, they need it right now to go ahead along with their prosecutions.
Okay, on the Espaldon amendment, Senator Juan Pat, the Espaldon amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I, I just wanted to make sure that they are not hiring their own attorney that would be housed at Agriculture, but rather to have legal services from the Attorney General's office?
That's right. I, be- because of the, of even the, the financial shortages over that their Attorney General's offices, they're, they're, uh, they're willing to use these funds to help the Attorney General hire, uh, uh, an attorney. But then again, that attorney will also, or, or at least will help provide for the coverage of an attorney. But they will be using the Attorney General's office as the attorney.
Okay, well, thank you for that information, sir, because that's exactly what I wanted to know is that, because, uh, and I don't know whether, do they, are they, um, I mean, if they have, I guess, the money and the position title, that they could hire the person, but then the person will be housed instead at the AG's office and that this attorney can also, because I know he's, he's not going to spend one hundred percent. I mean, there's not that many, uh, you know, illegal hunting and violations. So that means that he would end up not doing anything and can still do other duties. So just, because you said the sole purpose, I know, of hiring that person. And I just want to make sure that that, uh, attorney will be able to do other, uh, legal, you know, um, duties aside from that when there, when, when there is, uh, no need to, um, or not enough, uh, prosecution for illegal hunting.
Do you have a question or you want, oh, okay, would you yield to the question?
I'll yield. And, and thank you for that concern because, uh, you're right. But, but one thing needs to be clear that there is a backlog of, uh, some cases for illegal hunting and terrestrial, uh, violations. But yes, the, the, as I understand it, an MOU has been worked out between the Office of Attorney General and the Department of Agriculture that, uh, Ag will be billed only according to the services they require specifically for the illegal hunting and terrestrial violations cases.
Okay, thank you very much Senator Juan Pat. If there's no other comments? No objections, perfect timing. Amendment carries. Uh, Senator Espaldon, you have one more?
Uh, yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, um, this next amendment that I'd like to proffer and hope, uh, involves the recycling revolving fund. Now, prior to the enactment of Public Law twenty-eight one seventy-five, Guam EPA had the jurisdiction over the implementation of the recycling revolving fund. And accordingly, Envir- uh, EPA proceeded with promulgating the necessary rules and regulations. These rules and regulations did receive public input and were approved by the Guam Environmental Protection Agency Board and were subsequently forwarded to the Guam Legislature as part of the triple A process. However, with the enactment of Public Law twenty-eight one seventy-one, the responsibilities of the recycling revolving fund were transferred to the Department of Public Works in January of two thousand and seven. Now, the Department of Revenue and Taxation has not collected the approved fees associated to the revolving fund due to the absence of the rules and regulations. And now nine months have elapsed without any funds being collected to the recycling fund. The attached rules and, and regulations, which I've included with this amendment, um, had, uh, the, uh, the attached rules are, are in essence the same rules and regulations that Environmental Protection Agency had promulgated with, of course, minor technical changes to reflect the transfer responsibilities to DPW. Uh, with its improve, with its approval and implementation, revenue tax could bring the process of collecting the associated fees. And DPW could resume the junk car and white goods removal program and other recycling programs. And, and this is, the reason why I'm putting this in it now is because I think everybody now is very aware of the crisis we have concerning the landfill and the solid waste situation. And a very important part of our solid waste situation on this island has got to be a recycling effort. And so what we need to do is make sure that there are funds behind that effort. So what I'm asking is, since this has already gone through, uh, uh, through with public input and has been forwarded to the legislature, but because of, uh, the technicality of, of having transferred that responsibility from EPA to, uh, DPW, um, it has not been enacted. So no funds been placed in, uh, no money has been collected to be placed in these funds to work on our recycling efforts on this island. So I'm asking the, the, this body to, to support this effort. Thank you.
Okay, thank you mu- very much. Esp- on the Espaldon amendment, no comment, no objection. Oh, Senator Juan Pat.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, on, on part B and page six, um, it says that the, 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 the Director of Public Works then shall administer the funds that are coming in and of course, they, they itemized what they should be used for. And I have a question here on number four where it says not more than one FTE employee at the Guam Environmental Protection Agency then will be tasked, uh, to administer this article. Is, um, is, will, will there be a, um, like a memorandum of understanding as well that, uh, this one individual is doing this, who would be tasked only then to do this again because they fall under EPA? And, um, uh, you know, I just wanted to know how that is going to work. I mean, I realize that this came from them, but we have not heard from EPA and I don't know what their, their feelings are. Uh, would you be able to respond?
Okay, would, uh, author the amendment, care to yield to the question?
Uh, yes, as I, as I, as I understand it, the, again, because we're, we're trying to make recycling a major component of our solid waste, uh, solution, I, I believe that the, the, this also calls for a, a certain amount of monies collected to be placed into the environmental protection for the funds in which, in which they will have, have that, uh, employee oversee this whole, uh, this whole program, recycling program.
And when is the, the effective date? And the reason why that's important, because just yesterday we did pass, um, you know, an amendment to, to have three hundred thousand go to the mayor's to, to assist them basically for the white goods, the collection of the white goods. And, um, and of course, you know, that will be to replenish and to reimburse the department for that. So it's important to note to, when would this all go into effect?
Senator?
I'll yield to that question. That's a good question. Uh, well, once, you know, once we, if we, if and when we do pass this bill, uh, and this becomes part, part of the law, then we can conceivably see that, that, uh, at revenue tax as part of the motor vehicle registration, uh, the funds will start coming in on a monthly basis. Yes. Yes, as soon as possible, again, because of, especially in light of the, the solid waste dilemma we're in right now.
Does that answer your question, Senator Juan Pat? Any further comments? Oh, okay, Senator Juan, okay, thank you Senator Juan Pat. Senator Pangolin?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, you know, Mr. Chair, I, I certainly appreciate the, the need to act expeditiously on this. But, um, you know, this is quite a, uh, a comprehensive provision, uh, in terms of enacting the rules and regulations. And, um, given the fact that this thing has kind of generated and regenerated itself from EPA to DPW down to the legislature, I would hope that, uh, the legislature would have at least taken the time to provide an opportunity for everyone to review it, uh, solicit input, uh, either personally or through, uh, the legislative hearing process. So, you know, and, and I understand that and I know we're doing things here that are going outside the, the, the normal flow of, uh, the legislative process, but something I thi- I think as major as this would hopefully be given an opportunity to review it, uh, much, uh, in much greater detail than I have today. And, uh, you know, unlike some of the amendments we have, we really can grasp the entire gist of the amendment and the intention as well as the, the ramifications of some of the amendments we're doing here. But something like this is a little bit more extensive and expansive. And so, um, it, it's, it's as close as we can to coming to something not being germane in a budget bill. And, um, I, I don't know if I could question the germane-ness, but, uh, maybe, maybe, Mr. Chair, we just do what we've al- what we've done outside of the ordinary flow of things and we require that it be put in the bill, it goes into law. We have to, that the legislature shall, uh, conduct a public hearing within sixty days of the enactment of this as we did the fees. You know, we required the departments to hold a hearing on the fees after they went into effect. As a, as an additional safeguard, so. You know, but, uh, I, I'm going to object to putting it in here at this time, I think, uh, you know, Mr. Chair, I just think that, uh, I, I feel uncomfortable with it and, and that's, that's really the bottom line, uh, for, for me in terms of given, again, where it has gone and, and not being able to understand where it first came from and what were the, uh, the changes from, from that time on, so. and, and what were the, uh, the changes from, from that time on, so.
Okay, thank you very much, Senator Pangolinan. Senator Espishio?
Thank you very much, um, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I'm also skimming, uh, very quickly, uh, through this, um, rules and regs. I mean, I understand, um, very clearly, uh, what has to happen here. Uh, after all, the Twenty-seventh Guam Legislature, uh, did pass a law which we pushed that would have advanced disposal fees, uh, for any, uh, automobiles, white goods, tires and batteries. And it was very comprehensive. It, it, it built upon the Integrated Solid Waste Management Plan. And then in the Twenty-eighth Guam Legislature, if you recall, uh, we were called into an emergency session, uh, to delay this plan. Uh, and the whole argument then was that there was no, uh, environmental impact study, uh, relative to these proposed fees. I'm, I'm looking through this, uh, rules and regs, and I'm going to ask if the Chairman will yield. Uh, has the, uh, Department of Public Works provided an EIS?
Will you, will you yield to the question, Senator?
Um, I'll yield to the question, and I, I'm not really certain on that, on the answer. I mean, I would imagine, because they have, uh, been busy, I, I don't think that they have done an EIS on the, the impact fees. I'm at the impact these fees will have.
I didn't, I didn't think so, um, either. And you know, Mr. Speaker, you're the author of the law that requires that anytime, uh, fees are to be promulgated through the triple-A process, that it must be accompanied by environmental impact statements. And then in twenty-nine oh-two, that law was just absolutely disregarded when this legislature by eight votes moved to raise all these, uh, taxes and fees. And so, you know, I'm just concerned about the, um, inconsistencies here. Uh, the other thing, originally, we wanted the, the administrator of the Environmental Protection Agency to administer these funds, uh, to provide a check and balance to Public Works. And now I'm seeing in this, uh, administration of recycling revolving fund, which is consistent to the law, my law that was amended, it would have the Director of Public Works do it. And I just don't think that's the most appropriate, um, place to have Public Works administer these funds. But rather, it should be EPA, uh, by doing a RFP to contract with a private entity, uh, to be able to do the whole, uh, recycling, uh, center and everything, uh, the abandoned vehicle program. Uh, I just believe I just cannot support something at this time that does not even recognize your law that requires an EIS. And so, having said that, I'm in total opposition to this amendment being put forth.
Okay, thank you very much, Senator Espishio. Senator Ishizaki?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, um, I rise in support of this. I, I think that we can continue to debate merits and demerits of past laws and when we've made exceptions. I, I think we do, we face an emergency crises today with solid waste and amongst other things. And, and I think if we're going to continue to nitpick on the rules and stuff, sometimes I think you'd, you have to cut through the paper and, and get it done. Uh, and, and I, I understand that EIS questions. However, we do have a solid waste crises. Uh, we have a big mess with trash, and I think we need to, to address those. Uh, on the matter of germane-ness, uh, I, I, I understand these will impact on revenues and, and, and it, it is a budget matter that, that is germane to what we're doing today. And, and so, my only concern, and I've, if the, the author would yield, is to ask the question on, with all the work done by EPA with this study, uh, are we, is the language of this, does that transfer to Public Works? And if, if that is so, then I'll be, I'll be quite satisfied.
Would the author care to yield? Senator Espodan?
I'll yield. Uh, yes, in fact, uh, the, the discussions have been ongoing between, uh, EPA and, uh, and, and, um, DPW. And yes, the, the, what, uh, what happened is that the, these rules and regulations were then, again, minor technical changes were made to reflect that the transfer is no longer in, within, uh, the authority of EPA, but now DPW. And, and yes, it does, the, these rules and regulations do reflect that.
Senator, continue?
I, I'm done with that. I, I rise in support of it and, and I focus, uh, you know, I mean, there are some objections and I, I, I think we need to move forward. So, uh, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much, Senator Palacios. Senator, I mean, Senator Ishizaki. Senator Palacios?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I rise in support of this amendment. Uh, it was during the Twenty-eighth Guam Legislature under the leadership of the, uh, Senator Brown, who chaired this. Uh, I attended several meetings back and forth, uh, and I look at these rules and regulations, and it incorporated many of the concerns, uh, raised by the EPA people and at the same time by DPW. And as I look at it, this is of course a much improved, perhaps, uh, improvement somewhere here and there. But, uh, again, what we have before us, uh, is, is the, it is actually a combination of, uh, work over the last, I guess, three years. And I guess it's time that, that these rules and regulations are adopted so that we can proceed with this program. And so I, I just like to share that with my colleagues, that there have been several, several public hearings, even, uh, roundtable discussions on this issue. So I rise in support of this amendment, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Senator Palacios. Uh, one minute recess? We'll have a one minute recess. Okay, so, okay, the committee of the hall is back in order. We are now, again, we, uh, are in the Pal- in, in the Espodan Amendment. Are there any other speakers? If no other speakers, there is an objec- is there an objection? There was an objection, so we'll have a call of hands. All those in favor of the amendment, please raise your hands. One, two, three, four, five, six. Amendment fails. Okay, we've dis- uh, we've dispensed with Senator Espodan's amendment. Next is, uh, who? Senator Wampat, you recognized? Okay, Senator Espodan, you have a bunch of amendments.
Okay, um, the first one is-
Senator, I have one, two, three, four, five amendments by Senator Wampat.
Okay, but I want to make sure that I'm able to give everybody their copies first of all, so we're going to go-
Hey, can we allow the senator to speak?
Okay, um, the first one, um, I mean, eh, I mean-
Okay, sen- okay, Senator?
Okay, yes, it's being passed out now, because I just don't want it to get lost in all the shuffle, paper shuffling, because it might end up in the trash. But the first, uh, section you have, Mr. Chairman, that I'd like to go through is for GCC, is to add a new section to Chapter Six, that the Guam Community College is authorized to expend the sum of one hundred and sixty-two thousand, four hundred and thirty-three dollars from the unappropriated fiscal year two thousand and six manpower development fund revenues pursuant to subsection seven-one-two-zero of twenty-two GCA Chapter Seven.
Good amendment. No comment, no objection. Uh, Senator Shimizu?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I support the, um, uh, funding for manpower development, especially in view of the, uh, upcoming, uh, needs for, uh, manpower. And I, I, uh, while we need to be able to train our people in this area, we want, we want to make sure that the, um, training, um, institution gets the money for it, uh, so that we can have a, an impact on, on our, uh, unemployment and can get people into it. The only thing that I wanted to, to ask here was that, it says Guam Community College is authorized to expend. Um, this is just an authorization versus that of an appropriation to them? No, but they, this is a special fund?
Yes.
So, w- w- could it, and the special fund is being managed by the Department of Administration? And would it be, wouldn't it be, uh, better if we not only authorize it, but we appropriate from the, um, manpower development, uh, the amount of one hundred and sixty-two thousand to the Guam Community College? So I, if, if I, if I can, I can go ahead and, uh, um, uh, make an amendment to, uh, Guam's amendment to change authorization to, to make it a direct appropriation. The Guam Community College is, um, is hereby appropriated the sum of one hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars from the unappropriated fiscal year two thousand and six. So that way, it's, uh, it's a, a direct appropriation.
Okay, uh, there's an amendment that's, that's been offered by the senator to the amendment. Uh, Senator Wampat, on the amendment to amendment, and that's to strike is authorized to expend, it's replaced by hereby appropriated the sum. Uh, Senator Wampat?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, what, um, I think maybe if, if what I'm going to, to share might actually explain some of this is that the, the monies are there already. But what they, they have the money, but they can't spend the money until we authorize them to spend the money. So, uh, it's, it's not a matter of appropriating it already, because they do have it, it's been sitting in their accounts uh, from that fiscal year two thousand and six. And they just need the authorization now by this legislature to, to spend, uh, the monies. Otherwise, if we're going to appropriate, we'll be appropriating, I think, uh-
Can you call one minute recess? Let's have one minute recess.
Okay, can I have one minute recess then?
Okay, on the amendment to amendment, Guam Community College is hereby, is hereby appropriated the sum of et cetera, et cetera. On, on the amendment to the amendment, if there is no objection, okay, amendment to the amendment carries. On the main amendment as amended, if there's no objection, amendment carries. Okay, Senator Wampat?
I hope I don't have as much trouble with the other ones. Um, uh, okay. The other one is, and it was passed out to use on the GPSS compensation plan review. Uh, I, I met with the, uh, the Attorney General's, uh, office and they wanted to, to really solidify the language again. Because when, what we did the last time, when we specifically listed, uh, guidance counselors and school librarians, there's actually no classification per se for them, because they fall under the teacher classification. So the language basically would say that these are fully certified teachers assigned then to work as full-time classroom teachers, to include teachers who are assigned as guidance counselors and school librarians. So that's just to, to clean up that language.
Which amendment? I'm sorry. Which? Okay, compensation plan. Okay, okay. On the, um, Wampat amendment?
Can you, can you, uh, uh-
Senator Shimizu, you, Senator Shimizu?
No, I'm just trying to make sure that I'm in the right, uh, music page here, because there's a whole bunch here. Um, can, can I just take a one minute break?
A one minute break.
I'm also looking at GPSS, the Adequate Education Act.
Flora?
Yeah.
Okay, the committee of the hall is back in order on the Wampat amendment. Senator Shimizu?
Yep, uh, thank you very much, uh, if the, uh, author, uh, would just yield. Uh, this is to, to, um, to amend a current public law. What, why do we need to amend the current law? Is it because of the compensation is being, I mean, the language of the law is being misinterpreted and is intent on us paying people that are, are not what she had intended it to, to happen?
Will the, will the author of the amendment care to yield? Senator Wampat?
Yes, uh, yes, Mr. Chair. Uh, yes, as a matter of fact, that's exactly what had happened when we used the term just certified teachers, basically a whole slew of individuals, whether they're actually in the classrooms or not, uh, were given that, uh, pay raise. Uh, then the second time, we went in and clarified basically who it is that, that this legislation was intended for, were not just classroom teachers, uh, guidance counselors and librarians. The problem was that the, uh, the Attorney General's office said that because guidance counselors and librarians do not have a separate title as such as, uh, in, at, uh, GPSS, uh, because they all then, when you come in as a guidance counselor, like, I would, I started out as a teacher. And then when I got my master's in guidance and counseling, then I came in as a guidance counselor. But my classification for a pay grade was a teacher classification. So what they suggested we do here is to say that, because they're all certified teachers, but they do, but are assigned then to become guidance counselors or librarians, and that's what this is doing.
Does that answer your question, Senator Shimizu?
Uh, it gives me an explanation. Um, is, is the author of this amendment saying that within the, the compensation or the classification, uh, of positions throughout government of Guam, there is no classification called guidance counselors? There's absolutely no classification? So when you apply to be a guidance counselor, you're actually applying as teacher one? Teacher two? Teacher three?
Yes. But of course, it's not teacher one, because, uh, when you come in with a master's degree as a guidance counselor, then of course, your, your teacher classification is higher than a teacher level teacher.
But you're, 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 you're being hired as a teacher assigned to guidance counseling duties?
Yes.
And what, because the way I loo- I was looking at this original language, uh, you know, it says, uh, this is the one that was redacted out, the compensation plans of certified teachers, guidance counselors and school librarians. Uh, is that, does that hold true also in terms of not, not having a classification for librarians within the government of Guam?
Yeah, well, the, the, school, that's why it's listed as school librarians, because we're talking only about the schools, not the, uh, main public libraries, territorial library.
But they are, but you could also say that they are librarians assigned to schools.
Okay.
Can? So in other words, it's still be teachers, everything is teachers. We can say teachers assigned into, um, thank you for the bell, but, uh, give me a minute.
Okay, can you please summarize?
Yeah. But a, a teacher can be assigned into the front office, for example. Uh, as a researcher planner, they will not get the compensation. They actually have to be in a classroom environment. Now, will this make it clear?
Senator, your time is up. Your time is up, Senator. I can't allow, we, we're, we're all following the rules. I'll allow you ten more seconds, please, if you'd like to close it, ten more seconds.
Yeah, I'll take ten seconds, thank you. Uh, so basically, what we're saying is only certified, only teachers that are in the classroom will get this compensation. Now, what would happen to those who didn't, who had got paid for that? Are they going to have to reimburse? Thank you for the ten seconds.
Thank you very much, Senator Shimizu. Thank you very much.
Your honor, your honor, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
On the, uh, Wampat amendment, if there are no other speakers, no objection, amendment carries. Senator Wampat, you still have a few more.
It's getting tougher and tougher. Uh, okay, the, the other one that, uh, let me get the biggest one out, maybe that would- might as well start now. Uh, the biggest one that I have is actually four pages long. But what it really would do, uh, Mr. Chairman, is that, um, my colleague here, uh, so this is from Judy Judy. And, and what it really would do here, Mr. Chairman, because I know that we're fast approaching, uh, the, the date, October one, for the adequate education. And, and this is at the request of, uh, the superintendent and, and, and the board members. And, and as you know, we've always taken the, the strong position that we did not want to, to lower the standards. We didn't want to make them think that they can't continue to work towards, uh, providing adequate education for, for the children. The, the biggest fear right now, because, and, uh, and of course, it's a matter of debate in terms of, uh, the funding, when the funds would be available to address the, uh, all fourteen points. And the first fourteen points, of course, which addresses certified teachers, guidance counselors, uh, you know, nurses and administrators are all within the budget and that passed as a packet under personnel. The other points are areas that addresses, of course, the facilities. And, and the way, at least currently, uh, not knowing where everyone's coming from, is that the financing to, to address the other points are going to be part of that, that bond. And, uh, a list or a schedule had come in to address every single one of tho- those issues. And they're going to be addressed, of course, in, in the bond. But the biggest problem now would be the October first date, where it calls for, uh, litigation. And, and the concern was that even when, um, uh, they're able to have the monies released to them, they would definitely already be subject to, to, uh, litigation. So what this actually would do is that it's, I'm amending- So what this actually would do is that it's, I'm amending that portion there, that it would not be a litigation, but rather, and it goes all the way to the backs of your old turn to the fourth page, because it just, it takes every section out where it addresses that, and it actually goes through a mediation. The twenty-seventh Guam Legislature passed a bill, twenty-seven, one, I mean, twenty-seven eighty-one, which actually created the mediation, the mediation, I guess, section out of the courts. And there, what this does basically is that getting the two parties to agree and setting some timeframes, and it's not like, like one attorney told me, is that I could technically go in there and start to sue on every single point, so, and it's like fourteen points for every child, and that's their biggest fear. Although there's no monetary resolution, the concern is the attorney's fees, and so what this would do is that if it goes through then the mediation process, that you will, it's non-litigous, and I think that that would be, that's what they would like. The other thing is, is just not to also let them feel that, well, even though, you know, they're not going through that process, they're still required by law to continue to fix up the schools to meet the adequate education, and they're going to be required then to, on G, on that last page, is to continue to report detailed accounting of all the monies that they've gotten, how they've expended it, and what the status is in terms of complying with the adequate education. And they would be making that report to the governor, of course, the board, and the legislature.
Okay. You know, because this is a fairly lengthy amendment, I'm going to divide the question here, and we're going to go by section by section. So we'll start with section fourteen. Yeah, well... Oh, they're all tied in? Okay, so actually, if there's no, I'm willing to go along with the body, we just tie it all together. Okay. Then we'll tie it together, it's fairly extensive. Senator Pangolino?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I, you know, after going and reviewing all of the changes, and I know that the single idea is, of course, a change in the adequate education requirement with regards to the ability of the public school student or public school parent to enforce the act as required to ensure that the schools and the school system meets the adequate education law. And it's a change in how the enforcement or the remedy that the parent has, under one, under the proposed, or under the existing law, the remedy, of course, is through a court action, and in this, the remedy is through the mediation. But I want to be able to at least have an opportunity to review the mediation statute. It may end up being more costly to the student on the mediation, because now the student and the parent have to bear their share of the mediation cost, and I think we need to make sure that we review that process and ensure that it doesn't discourage, or at least inhibit, parents, or prevent even because of economic concerns, parents and students from ensuring compliance to the law through some kind of enforcement action upon GPSS. So I wanted to review that Guam mediation law, and would like to reserve the balance of my time to come back. I think I got two minutes left. I'm pretty good at timing five minutes these days.
Okay. Okay, let's take a couple of minutes recess. In order, we are going to get, we are going to take a lunch break, and we'll be back at two o'clock, two o'clock. First, Senator Wantpat?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just like to ask the body if I could just go ahead and withdraw that amendment that I offered prior to lunch, because I am going to provide a different amendment.
There's no objection. No objection. Okay, Senator Wantpat, you have other amendments?
Yes, I hope you have it, but...
I see two more.
This one is the one that also talks about, yeah, it's by both Judys, and it's a GPSS budget. What is actually, it's actually in the GCA, but what I'm amending here is that, which is underscored, is that the superintendent shall submit the GPSS fiscal year budget approved by the board to the legislature, and the added words is, "and a courtesy copy to Imagalahan Guahan no later than May 30th." That's the first amendment to the existing legislation. The other is the bottom where it says that the budget shall be in the format of the budget code issued by BBMR, and shall include a section containing GPSS budget request to federal agencies for federal grant awards by object classification and by grant, inclusive of each grant staffing pattern, current and proposed, and such information as may be requested by Laesler Tron Guahan. The reason for this, Mr. Chair, is that there was actually a time when a totally new format was designed, and it caused a lot of confusion in what I called last term, creative budgeting. So what I'm saying is just to get them to follow the format with, of course, and it's still in the books, that they would still have to address the fourteen points.
Okay, thank you, Senator Wantpat. If there's no comment, no objection, amendment carries. Senator Wantpat? Restriction on, is that yours? Restriction on executive branch hiring of unclassified employees. No, you have one, don't you have this one? Restriction on executive branch hiring of unclassified employees. It's... You want to use mine? Here you go. Senator Wantpat, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I mean, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Chairman.
I'm the mayor.
Mr. Chairman, I, this is actually the reason why I would say this, because this was at the request of the mayor's counsel, that we include this new section, which means that restriction on executive branch hiring of unclassified employees. What this basically means is that if we do not, that this should not apply to the mayor's counsel and the Office of Public Auditor, then in essence, neither one of them would ever be able to hire because their employees are currently unclassified.
Okay, thank you very much, Senator Wantpat. If there's no comment, no objection. Senator Shimizu? Can you have, can you hold the microphone? I'm sorry, Senator?
This is just rollover, to be able to, to use the funds for the repair of the basketball court? They don't have that, it's just... Wait, which one is that? Got one minute recess, because...
One minute recess. Committee of the halls back in order. Senator Shimizu, you have the floor.
Well, Mr. Chairman, we got the copy finally, and I asked staff to cross-reference what is the provision contained in chapter twenty-one of this chapter, shall not apply to the mayor. My amendment is to just put period after the mayor's counsel of Guam, period.
Okay, so there's been an amendment to the amendment where you would strike the office of the public auditor?
No, what I'm saying is just put period in Guam, right after Guam, period.
Right after Guam, okay. Okay. Just to put a period?
Yeah, and then delete every other section.
And delete the remainder, okay.
Right.
Okay, on the amendment to the amendment offered by Senator Shimizu, is there any comment? Is there any objection? Objection, okay. On the amendment to the amendment, all in favor of the amendment to the amendment, please show of hands. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight.
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 No objection.
Amendment carries. Amendment to the amendment carries.
Thank you.
On the main amendment, on the main amendment as amended, is there any other comment or objection? No objection, amendment carries. Senator Wantpat, you have one more to go. Okay. Okay, we'll take a minute recess to turn around the copies. Order, Senator Wantpat?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I really appreciate the fact that you were able to allow me to pull back that other amendment on the adequate education compliance.
So no objection to the withdrawal of the amendment?
Yes, okay, and I have a substitute amendment to that, basically, and I'd like to explain this a little bit. What we're trying to do here, Mr. Chairman, that everybody was really concerned, is the litigation part, where the minute there is a non-compliance, the very first thing they'll do is run to the courts, and the GPSS, of course, the board, you know, and a lot of our members here are just as concerned. I'm not saying that we're not appropriating the monies, because I like to say that there is a provision to, for monies to be provided to address the fourteen points. What this would actually do is we're trying to put another, a layer, so to speak, where we can also put a face to, in the department, where if there is this complaint, they actually can go to that person, so that means they must exhaust every administrative process, and that's in the very first two sections of page one. The biggest part here is actually the creation now of that hearing officer, who will be an independent officer within the Department of Education, and is after creating then that hearing officer, and we know it more as an ombudsman, but because it is more of a local thing here, we're going to call it the education surhano, and there will be qualifications for the individual. And if you read, basically, the existing legislation on the office of the surhano, which is currently under the legislature, the powers and duties of that surhano, in which they, he would be able, or he or she would be able to conduct an investigation, the person would be able to go out and get the information that they need, that they'll be able to bring in witnesses, they'll be able to go out to the schools and do an investigation themselves, and may be able to subpoena a person. All of these will be within the powers of the education surhano. And the other thing, too, I'd like to say is that then the next layer is, is that even this surhano will be able, he or she will be able to then bring civil proceedings to any appropriate court to enforce the provisions of this chapter, and, you know, and to be able to retain, you know, legal counsel to effectuate the intent of this subsection and the chapter. The other thing is, and it still stays intact, is the suit, yes, that's the last resort, that that is still there, it's still available, but just like anything else, is that we always like to be able to try to resolve this first at the lowest level possible, and that's what the intention of this amendment is, not to say that we want to take away completely, you know, the right of a parent or a child to go and sue for not being provided an adequate education. That will all be there, and it's just that there would be other procedures first prior to that. The thing that I'd like to ask my colleague, please, is on page four, on H and L, is to, the word, of course, that we took it, like I said, from the office of surhano, is to just replace the word secrecy to confidentiality. These are information that are considered confidential in terms of what maybe the witnesses have provided.
Okay, if there's no objection to the amendment to the amendment, okay. On the amendment as amended, Senator Shimizu? On the main amendment? Senator Shimizu, please.
It will be on the, because what she did was just made a replacement, a minor amendment, I'm just talking on the bill.
Sure.
Mr. Chairman, one of the things here, that I'm looking at is the issue of litigiousness of the current legislation, and this amendment still retains a certain amount of litigiousness, in other words, it says, may sue, may sue, may sue, and now we're creating a section that says, or a verbiage that says, "only after exhausting the administrative process contained in chapters eleven and fourteen," and I'm trying to find out what is that administrative process? Is it delineated in this amendment? Because I'm trying to find that process, because normally, for example, if we, let's take it in another area where an employee has been given an adverse, and now he goes, he must go through the process of trying to, you know, have it removed, had a hearing, and it couldn't work, then he goes to the Civil Service Commission, he has his day with the Civil Service Commission, and then on up, but I'm trying to find that process.
Sure. Just to let you know, this, usually, the chair is not supposed to be answering, but obviously...
No, I'm...
The remaining pages are the process.
Well, I'm trying to find out, it says removal and termination of the surhano, the term of office of the surhano, the right of complainant, and that they can investigate, and so forth. I guess what I'm trying to insert here, that even after the process of the investigation and cursing and cursing, I like to be able to see that it just don't go straight, and that there is some sort of process of bringing the people together in a non-litigious environment to mediate this issue before the person, the surhano, educational surhano himself, would say, okay, well, I did all those investigations, I'm ready to take it to court. And usually, in that process, I think the Pacific Island way, is to be able to look at that language. That's what I was hoping to see here, other than the duties or responsibilities of how the surhano is going to investigate the complaint. The surhano, in his discretion, may investigate any administrative fact, so it really is just a, the surhano is the person that you bring the complaint to, hear it, and so forth, and then, I don't know if he has, is this process that he would then make a ruling on his investigation? Does he hereby rule, like civil service would rule, that, no, there is no merits to this complaint, I'm going to, or there is merit, I'm going to take it and over to the court? So I'm hoping that that process could be incorporated in that mediation part. Now, while they say, well, we don't know what the cost is of mediation, well, we surely don't know what the cost is of litigation. So, you know, that's something that is going through my thought processes, that maybe even through mediation, it may come out more positive end result than sometimes when even the results of litigation is still doesn't set, and then you still have the whole process of going up on appeals and so forth and so forth. So, you know, I would hope that there may be some reconsideration. It's a very lengthy amendment in and of itself, so right on my thought process to try to put some of that verbiage, and we're here, that's why I asked for the process. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much, Senator Shimizu. On the Wantpat amendment, Senator Guthertz?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just, first, I'd like to say that I think this is a very prudent approach to really enlist the realization of the fourteen points that we all are very supportive of. At the same time, to me, this amendment focuses on the school system from a positive perspective, and hopefully will avoid contentious actions against the school system that can be resolved through proper alternative approaches. It provides an alternative approach to resolve concerns from the community about the school system. I'd much rather give the money to the school system than money to lawyers who want to sue the school system, Mr. Chairman, and I would hope that not just my colleagues, but the public in general would feel the same way. Money to the schools, not to the lawyers. In addition, Mr. Chairman, I have a very minor amendment, which would be section E... In addition, Mr. Chairman, I have a very minor amendment, which would be Section E. It would be added as Section E to Senator Wampat's amendment. And it's a very simple amendment, it simply would say...
Section E, where would that be?
We would add a new section, a new item E at the end.
In the final page?
Yes, the last, it would be item E.
Okay.
Very simple. "The Guam Public School System shall provide clerical services and office space to support the work of the Education Surhano." "The Guam Public School System shall provide clerical services and office space to support the work of the Education Surhano."
Okay, does the clerk have that? Okay, and on the amendment to the amendment, no objection. Amendment to the amendment carries. Is that your final word on the amendment? Okay, thank you very much, Senator Guthert, Senator Palacios.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, when the current law was debated in the last term, I had concern whether this government can comply with those fourteen points. At that time, it was determined that it could. And now the parents of students who have had grievance in the past look forward to resolving these grievances in a more expeditious fashion as provided by the current law. I think, I believe that this amendment proposed to relax that, and I guess create another layer of inconvenience and other things. And either we take a stand now, or we don't. And I think that this body will continue to deal with problems that's found in the school systems. I believe, and I always say, that the problem is with the systems. There's nothing wrong with some of these laws. And this amendment is just gonna relax that, and it would result in the disenchantment of parents who look forward to this. If this had been effective, the fourteen points, last year, I would have filed, I would be the first to file suit for neglect of repair of aircon and those things. And, I don't know, I mean, I am satisfied with the current law. If there's anything, maybe we can extend the application of SOT's law another six months, another three months. But to add the Surhano, and then we have this, what do you call it? The administrative hearing and mediation and those things. I find it difficult to not continue to protect the current statute that is not provided for the fourteen points. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, Senator Palacios. Senator Pangolinon, on the amendment?
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I kind of had the same kind of feeling and the same concern with regards to the retiring speaker, with regards to, are we now presenting a discouragement to the parents to exercise their right? And I certainly believe that that argument has merit. But I also understand the effort being placed in trying to resolve the issue before we have to take money that could go towards resolving the problem and taking it out of the school system, and that money becomes not available, and now has to be paid for attorneys. And it could be that one lawsuit may end up in multiple counts of violations. And so, a single lawsuit could cost you a thousand, two thousand, plus every single additional count of noncompliance could cost you another thousand. So one lawsuit could end up costing ten, fifty, ten, twenty, thirty, forty thousand dollars to resolve, but that's the attorney fee that is paid. And so I understand what we're trying to do here, trying to at least provide a focal point in which we could keep as much of the resources as we can inside the school system to resolve those problems. So in order to try and at least ensure that the barrier is leased, and the timeframe is not exacted to exhaust and frustrate the parents, I think that I would just like to make an amendment on page four of the amendment, on eleven one oh six. And it would be to add a line after, in subsection C of that. And it says, "After an investigation of a complaint, he shall suitably inform the complainant of his conclusion or recommendation of any appropriate, if any, appropriate, any action taken or to be taken by the agency involved." And I would like to add, within twenty days of the filing of the complaint. So that you go, you file a complaint, he's got twenty days to respond to you, what they're gonna do about it, if they're gonna do anything about it, whether or not they're gonna just dismiss you, and then you can begin the process. And so, within twenty days, it doesn't really prevent, that means you can sue after the twentieth day, if you wish to. But this at least provides us an opportunity to have the school system try and work with specific concerns that parents and students bring to the school system, and so that within that twenty day period, they can tell you, "We're going to resolve it. Here's how we're gonna do it." And you can believe and trust them or not. And if you don't believe or trust them, then you go to court and move that. But at least we have that twenty day window to try and work with this complaint and resolve it before we begin incurring costs of going to court. And I know that twenty days may seem like, I was thinking of forty-five, but, you know, I really think that we have to provide as expeditious, so, because the twenty days doesn't say you're resolving the problem. The twenty days says, you tell them how you're gonna resolve it, what you're gonna need, and what you're gonna do. And if they agree with you, then you go do it, and then you prevent a lawsuit from happening. But at that moment, if they don't comply with what you tell them, then they go and file the lawsuit. So I think that's a reasonable assurance, at least, that this office will provide to these complainants. So I'd like to present that amendment. And that, again, that is in subsection C, after the word involve, add a comma, and just put in the words, "within twenty days of the filing of the complaint."
Okay, and if there's no comment, no objection? Okay, amendment to the amendment carries. On the amendment as amended, Senator... Senator? On the amendment as amended, Senator Luhon, were you... Were the amendment as amended, the main amendment?
Yeah, on my amendment, Mr. Speaker, just a grammatical change on that, in that subsection C.
Yes.
It should, it shouldn't say, "if any appropriate," just say, "if appropriate."
If appropriate.
Yeah, on the clerk, in that subsection C, on the second line.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, so on the main amendment, Senator Luhon.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, my amendment that I brought up right now, I think has been passed out already. Basically, it's to amend subsection B of the Wampat amendment to add a new subsection C to nineteen GCA, subsection one 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 six, to read as such. Mister Chairman, when we first talked about adequate education and putting the fourteen points together with Senator Klitsky, I tried to do this, the same thing back then. You know, parents basically don't want to litigate. They just want adequate education for all their students. We are talking about lawsuits and things of that nature. But one thing, again, that we must keep in mind is that there must be constant learning and teaching going on for this child. Any disruption at any time removes that child again, and monies that would go to the education of that child to not educating that child. My proposed fix for this is basically in this amendment. This adds teeth to it, basically. What it does is that, rather than litigation, monies that are appropriated to individual students on a annual basis, those particular grievances that parents have problems with at those particular schools, case in point. Look how long it takes, or it's taken, for air conditioning to be addressed in the different schools, in particular, Southern High and Temuading Elementary. Students should not have to be subjected to that. Learning must continue to happen in an adequate situation, adequate environment. What this bill does, again, it eliminates the need for lawyers, alleviates the litigation. What it does, it continues to provide this child with adequate education at the school of their choice, that money is given to the parent to take that student to the school of their choice. Until such time, that particular grievance that they were supposed to take them to court about has been rectified. With that, it's self-explanatory, Mr. Chairman. Again, we don't want these monies to go to attorneys. We want these monies to continue to stay with the student, and that learning continues to happen on a daily basis. And that's what I think we're all saying here. Rather than litigate it, educate the student. Don't litigate, educate. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Senator Luhon. On the Luhon amendment, there's been an objection to the amendment. Does anyone else want to speak on it? Anyway, there's been an objection of no... Well, okay, there's been an objection. A show of hands, all in favor of the Luhon amendment, raise their hand. There was an objection. So there's an objection, so all in favor, raise your hand, show of hands, one. Amendment fails. On the main amendment, if there's no other comments? Oh, you'd like to close, Senator? Okay. Senator Wampat, you can close the amendment.
It's a rare opportunity, Mr. Chairman, to close, because you know, normally I don't. I'd just like to say that I do appreciate, of course, everyone's concern, and this has been a real concern of mine as well, you know, being an educator, having been in the system, and, you know, not being able sometimes to get some of these problems rectified. But everyone knows, of course, regardless whether this bill is even in the books or not, I mean, this law's in the books or not, everyone has that right to go to court anyway and sue. We all know that. But, you know, like Senator Guthert said as well, too, and Senator Shimizu mentioned, is that it's a little bit different in the islands. And I hate to think, and I really don't want our community to become a litigious, you know, society, so to speak, that you get some frivolous types of suits as well. And I think that this will show a very honest and concerted effort and a genuine concern that we want to rectify the problem. I also want to say that although, depending on where we go, of course, in the next chapter, but all of the requests by the Department of Education to meet the fourteen points are being addressed there as well, that funding will be provided to do that. Now, if there's anything else outside, of course, of what we can do, then we have absolutely no control of that. And I'd just like to say that there is one concern by Senator Shimizu in the process that he was talking about, and on page three, just to reiterate, is that to undertake, participate in, or cooperate with persons and agencies in such conferences, inquiries, meetings, or studies as might lead to improvements in the functioning of GPSs relative to this. So there is that process, then, that there will be meetings, and that the goal is to always work towards improvement. So it's provided for. So I just want to, of course, ask my colleagues, I hope everybody would support it, even my colleague to my right, who had some objections, but I think that the fact that there is that twenty day response, I would say, on his behalf, because I know he told me that, that, you know, he's glad that that is in place now, so he's nodding his head, so I think he's going to support it as well. Thank you very much.
Okay, again, on the amendment, if there's no objection, amendment carries. Senator Wampat, you have a couple more?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, and what I want to do here, because throughout the bill, we have several sections in which we're requiring a reporting requirement. And I also want to make sure, too, that we're not taking this, I mean, trying to lax off, or not going to take this seriously, because I want to add a new section, and that's the Adequate Education Reporting Requirement. The superintendent, of course, it says here, must submit a monthly report. But what we also want to do to make sure here is that in, at the same time, since we are appropriating monies for them to meet the fourteen points, the amendment including here is that, and, not just report, but to give us a status report on how they're complying with implementing, you see, the Adequate Education Act. And then the other thing that I really feel that it is not through the fault of the superintendent, and I'm deleting the last three lines here, that failure to comply with this section and the criteria of an adequate publication, education, shall subject the superintendent to civil liability. I mean, you know, so I just don't think that that is right, especially if, you know, the failure is not on his part, and more so if he's doing his job that he shouldn't be.
Okay, thank you very much, Senator Wampat. On the Wampat amendment, if there's no comment, no objection, amendment carries. Senator Wampat, you have one more.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, if you remember last term, we did actually appropriate a certain amount of monies to actually conduct a GPSs management audit. And what this does now is that, because they're doing the financial audit, but we're expanding this to the management and curriculum audit then of the system. And the language that you see here, basically, are all that we had originally. This is Senator Tenori and I have this, you know, in bill form. And also on the funding source as well, as part of the bond, of course, is that there is, because they were not able to find anyone to conduct the audit, and so the amount that is included, not in this one, of course, because this is just administrative, is three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars to address and to audit. And the most important thing here, we've got to find out, the new things that are included, is that is the system providing an adequate education, you know? And then how effective, of course, is GPSs and administrators in implementing the board policies? I mean, these are things that normally you expect, but if it's not being done, then the audit will show all these. So I hope that my colleagues will support this amendment as well.
Thank you very much, Senator amendment. Senator Wampat, if there's no comment, no objection, amendment carries. Next, we have Senator Pangolinon.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker, and Mr. Chairman. Mr. Speaker, I'd like to start with the amendment that's to add a new section to chapter six, and it's the VCP-F-Bloss Jr. amendment. And it should have been passed out, Mr. Speaker. It's to add a section that would read, under section, new section A, "Of the sums appropriated to the government Guam Retirement Fund to supplement funding for retirees' benefits, seven hundred and fifty thousand shall be transferred to the Department of Mental Health and Substance Abuse to supplement its operations for FY two oh eight." And then subsection B of that amendment would read that the sum of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the appropriations contained in section one, part three of chapter three of this act, which is the appropriations to mental health, shall be used for the operations in support of the Child Mental Health Initiative Program, the Ifamagunta Program System of Care, to support children and adolescents under twenty-two of age with serious emotional disturbances and their families. The reason we need this amendment, Mr. Speaker, real quick, is, of course, that the matching fund requirement under the grant for Ifamagunta has increased the local matching fund requirement over the years of the grant. And so, while there is one million dollars available in federal grant in cash, the matching requirement is a two to one. So for every two dollars that we come up with under the local matching requirement, we can draw down a one dollar of federal grant. And in order to sustain the operation of the Ifamagunta, we really need to add on top of the two hundred and fifty that's contained in the budget bill, an additional seven fifty, so that, that coupled with the in-kind contribution that the Ifamagunta Program and the government of Guam contributes to that, would bring us up to the maximum required, and a little bit over, to draw down the entire one million dollar in federal grant. So that's what this would do, Mr. Speaker, and I ask my colleagues for their support. So that's what this would do, Mr. Speaker, and I ask my colleagues for their support.
Okay, no comment, no objection, amendment carries. Senator Pangolinen.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, the other amendment that I would like to present is the amendment to add a new section, and it's to fund the H.LATI program at the University of Guam. Last, the H.LATI program is a federally grant, is a federal grant that needs some local matching grants also. And it's based out of the University of Guam. And it it provides expansion of of programs for training of healthcare professionals, childcare providers, et cetera. And we funded the program at sixty-five thousand dollars, and it allows them to at least minimally run the program and then go out and seek for additional federal grants. And so this would provide sixty-five thousand four one one from the appropriation to the University of Guam to fund this program, and it also allows the balance of the program, funding that this legislative body provided in twenty-nine oh two to be expended until or be allowed to be to continue until fully expended. So I think that the upgrade of the skills of our providers in the private sector on the healthcare and childcare side would be greatly served by this and our and our community as well.
Okay, if there's no comment, no objection, amendment carries.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. The the third amendment I have, Mr. Speaker, is an amendment to amend Public Law twenty-seven one twenty-seven. The change in the bid requirement for for bids for to assist small business was changed in this public law sponsored by Senator Tina Munya Barnes.
My Senator, I see two release of bid security.
Yeah, the one with 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 three, no, the one without my signature. The one without my initial. Yeah, and as you know, Mr. Speaker, right now, when you bid, they have to have a fifteen percent bid security. And then what happens on bids for lease of government space, where the government is going to lease the space, is that you you bid, you have to provide a fifteen percent bid security. And then if you get the bid, you turn over, you you sign your lease, you you decide, define the terms and conditions of the lease, and all the remedies are in the lease, and then you turn over the property to the to the Government of Guam, and they occupy the building. Now, the current law, according to the reading of the Department of Administration, says that they keep that bid security for the term of the lease. So if the lease is five years, they actually want to keep your bid security for five years. And it really doesn't make any sense, because you're providing a a deposit in which the government's the one really usually that's not paying you. So this allows, once the lease is signed, once you turn, you you take possession of the property, that the bid security, because it is a bid security, it's not a performance bond, it's a bid security. So once all the bid conditions are satisfied, they really should release that. And so this would allow the release of that. And the government always has the remedy of, if you're not performing for the lease, it's what's set forth in the lease, or withholding your payment, your lease payment. So it really doesn't make sense to keep this bid security by the government. And that this would allow the release of that, again, once all the bid requirements are are settled, and the government takes possession of the property.
Okay, thank you very much Senator Pangolinen. On the Pangolin Amendment, Senator Palacios.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, of course, I rise in support of this, but looking at this, I'm familiar with a bid for service, such as custodial services, security services. And I wonder whether a bid, a ten percent security bid package that's submitted would would also be included? Because I understand that the Department of Administration, GSA, keeps that and 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 consider that as the same as pending the delivery, the full delivery of product that you bid for. Now, if it's a product, I understand that you have to deliver the whole. But if it's a service bid spread for twelve months, I believe that as 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 soon as the the award is made to a bidder, I think that the the security bid that's posted, the ten percent of the bid package, be returned to the to the successful bidder. And I wonder whether that's that's covered with this amendment? If not, then a bid for service should also be included.
Would you care to, I I think the Senator who offered the amendment like to, would you like to defer, refer a question? Senator Pangolinen.
I I don't know, this does not cover for services. This only covers on the lease, on lease of real property bids. I wasn't aware of that problem with the bid, because under the services, there's other provisions that govern the release of that. Because some sometimes they require performance bond, you know? And so they release the bid bond if the performance bond is posted. Now, in the request for the for lease on leases, they don't require the performance bond. They only keep the bid bond, which really doesn't, again, so this this does not cover that, because and and I'm I'm not aware that that is a problem under the services. I'm just not not aware of that.
Senator Palacios, I ask you.
The the a bid for services, like the custodial service, for example, the security service, they don't, it it does not require a performance bond, I I know that. It only requires a ten percent bid security. And I guess it's the interpretation of GSA from time to time that they say, no, we cannot release this until the the service, the the one-year service is completed. And it is the same as the lease, I mean, you still have the property. So I, there's no risk to the government, for example, if there should be a default or a failure of the provider anytime during a twelve-month period. Not like the construction that one should begin, you have to complete that, so the performance bond is required for for those kind of project. But for the service fee, I mean, for the for the service contract, GSA, sometimes they interpret it to include a performance bond or a bid, and they just held on to that. And I, just to make sure, I I I would like to say this, that we include a a bid for service, custodial service, territorial service.
Would you care to offer an amendment then?
If I may just provide, I I'm I'm a little hesitant on that, because the services, you have to perform almost every month. With with the lease, you just give them the building, you know what I mean? So that there's really no chance that you're not gonna, you're gonna take the building back. Now, with the services, there may be a time where you don't show up for work and you don't do the the job, you know, and so forth. So that's my only hesitancy in that. I I think that, but if you want, if if there's an amendment, I'm not gonna oppose it, but I that was my only hesi- and I wasn't aware it was under, they were doing the same thing. So that really is the major reason I didn't include it.
Senator, the the only problem is your time was up, so you you would you like to offer, maybe an amendment could be offered? Well, can you, you could, would you like to offer, allow you to write an amendment down? Would you, are you wishing to write an amendment?
No, no, not not really, I mean, that's, I mean, I'm sure the other services that would have been affected anyway, and Opa'olo will deal with that later on, on a separate bill.
Okay. Thank you very much Senator Palacios. Senator Tina, Tina Rose Munya Barnes.
Uh, Sisus Masie, Mr. Chair, for giving me this time. Mr. Chair, I I can understand and respect the retiring speaker's comments. And but as I noted with the author, this bid security for lease of real property of the government is is strictly, I think, for the facility itself. And I rise in support of this amendment, Mr. Speaker or Mr. Chair. I think it's important that when the Department of Administration reviews the security bid on the existing leases and that everything is in order, the terms and conditions have been complied with, and all the parties have has literally dotted their i's and crossed their t's, I think there's no reason why the Department of Administration or or our government should continue to hold this security, this bid's security. And I think it's important that this provision be put in, and I like, again, I just want to note for the record that I rise in full support of this effort. Sisus Masie.
Okay, thank you very much Senator Palacios. So if there's no other comment, well, I'm, my apologies, oh, my goodness. No, no, no. How could I make such a mistake with such a rose? I confuse the the rose from the thorn. My apologies, Senator Barnes. If there are no other comments or no objection, amendment carries.
Just one more, Mr.
Uh, one more amendment.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, this is a an amendment to the to the Freedom of Information posted on the internet. And we really have, I want to commend the administration on on really doing some initiatives on moving us towards a web-based service, availability of information on the web, and so forth. But I think as we move to that, there are some agencies and departments within the government that require access to these reports and and studies that are funded by local and taxpayer dollars to only be available to members. And so it really doesn't make sense, Mr. Speaker, that, and the only way that you can become a member is to pay a membership fee to access a government website, to access a government document that's been paid for by the taxpayers, but you have to become a member of that agency. And so I wanted to 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 make an amendment to that, that all of those information that's posted, and there are public documents on the web, that that shall not, at no time shall information be restricted or limited by user status, usable passwords, or the assessment of dues, memberships, or registration fees. As we, like I said, migrate to more web-based stuff, we don't want to provide a monetary barrier or a membership requirement in order to access those. And that all documents and or all reports, studies, and plans initiated or conducted by any department or agency shall be posted on the website upon release. And by two thousand and eight, all reports being held in all departments and agencies shall be posted on the internet homepage of each respective department and agency.
Thank you very much Senator Pangolinen. Senator Palacios? No, Palacios first then.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I rise in support of this, again, this adds more transparency to how this government conducts itself. And I think the this government should continue to simplify the process by which members of the public can access information regarding the conduct of this government. And this is strengthen that commitment. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much Senator Palacios. Senator Blas.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, I'd like to be, to offer an amendment to the amendment. Basically, it's to amend and to add to the lines in subsection B, right after all reports, studies, and plans initiated or conducted by any department or agency, and the lines to the section to be added is comma, except criminal investigative and security-related reports, studies, and plans.
Except for criminal investigative.
And security-related reports, studies, and plans.
And security-related.
And then this one.
Reports and plans.
And they're they're doing it now.
Okay. Anyways, you said it verbally, they're passing it out, but if there any, if there's no objection to the amendment to the amendment, okay. Amendment to the amendment carries on the main amendment. If there's no other comment, no objection, amendment carries. We are dispensed with Senator Pangolinen. We got. That eighth vote, the eighth vote. Senator Frank Blas.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, the first one that I'd like to be able to submit is amendment that is sponsored by Not Myself and Speaker Tony Opinco. It says FBGARU on it. It's to add a new section to Chapter Six. And section, what, whatever, limited-term appointment moratorium, the provision contained in section thirty-nine of this chapter should not apply to the Port Authority of Guam.
Okay, okay. No comment, oh. Senator Restejo.
I just want to ask very quickly, the legislature, I believe, passed a law that would authorize casual employees. It was passed by a narrow margin. What is the status of that? Because essentially, that's accomplishing the same thing, right?
It's basically accomplishing the same thing.
But wasn't there already a law that authorizes?
Can we, can can we?
Let's have a minute recess. If there's no comment, no objection, amendment carries. Senator Blas.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, second one that I'd like to be able to offer up is a amendment that I've co-authored with Senator Luhon, and it's to add a new section to Chapter Six, miscellaneous provisions, to read section blank, a new section sixty-one oh five point one is added to Title Seven Guam Code annotated to read as follows. And I'm sure that everybody has got this, the copy of the amendment. And what this basically does, Mr. Chair, is is it 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 makes it a little bit more stringent with regards to how many times, basically, an individual, within the judicial system, an individual can be basically dismissed or excused or recused from being able to handle a certain case. And and I I think that to to do this amendment a little bit more justice, what I'd like to do is is I'd like to go ahead and 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 defer and refer yield to like the co-author of the amendment too as well, Senator Luhon, if he's willing to, if he's willing to talk on on the amendment too as well.
Would the co-author of the amendment care to yield? The author amendment has yielded his time.
I I could try to help out there.
You have four minutes.
And I I wanna I wanna thank the, I wanna thank the the author of the amendment for for allowing me to to co-author with him. And basically, our offices have worked on this. We had seen, Mr. Chairman, what happened basically yesterday in the in the confirmation hearing of of Judge Merriman. As again, as 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 recent as as yesterday. You know, where they they call the challenging of a judge's impartiality that that perceive causing a deep rift between between judges and the disqualification of judges. And the 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 author and and the staff had researched, and my staff as well, researched California statute, basically, their 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 code section of civil procedure, subsection one seven zero point six. Well, they they follow the same system, basically. It keeps everything intact in regards to 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 disqualifications, procedures here in in Guam law. It just, this one just adds on to that. You know, we're a close-knit society, a community here in in Guam, Mr. Mr. Chairman. Every one of us have some kind of relationship, whether very close or 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 someone in our family is very close to someone that may be in the judicial system. And we see this kind of rift that that it basically causes when you have, again, we're all shocked when we 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 got letters, committee members, if not, if not senators, the whole body in general got letters from a sitting jurist about another jurist. And that shouldn't happen in a judicial system. And then when 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 again, when when you go at the the accusations of judge shopping and things of that nature. What this allows basically is is that the the attorney is allowed to to again, call for a disqualification of a judge at the first time. And then, is that my, is my time out?
Two or minutes.
Thank you, thank you. The next time they call for recusal, the 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 attorney will have to really, really prove that that second judge is really an unbiased judge, basically, Mr. Mr. Chairman. Again, we have a judicial system that we don't want tarnished. Again, to have sitting sitting jurists speaking about other sitting jurists in in this demeanor and having one come upon judgment of of another, and to come out in in a in a public forum, again, you know, we can't have that. We must preserve, again, the sanctity of the of the judicial system that be unbiased, fair, and blind to to, again, to to what is brought to them until such cases are are litigated before them. And all this does, again, it doesn't remove any, as the the author, again, both the author and their staff and my my staff worked, and looking to try to, again, put something together to be able to ensure that any anyone, again, that comes before us, that something like this does doesn't happen. And it 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 just adds on to what is currently there. Again, extracted from from California Code's section of civil. Again, extracted from, from California Code's section of civil procedure, subsection one zero seven zero six. And with that, again, I want to thank the author for, for asking me to co-author and to help put something together to hopefully alleviate and move forward.
Okay. Thank you very much, Senator Lohan. Senator Palacios?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chairman, I raise in support of this amendment, and I too became concerned whether it's true or not, the perception of judge shopping is very disturbing. And in Guam, that would not be difficult, because when you have only seven judges, it won't take you, it won't take you long to get to the judge you want. Maybe by the third choice, and then you get it. And, you know, this begins then to interfere with the real justice. And I think it's about time that this amendment be put in place to discourage that, or at the minimum, put the burden on the moving attorney to prove that the second choice is not a good choice, or it's not a valid choice, or whatever. But judge shopping in Guam is not difficult. We only have seven judges to go around, so you'll get to who you want before long. And I think this is a good amendment. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Thank you very much, Senator Palacios. Senator Pangolino?
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I don't support the amendment for one simple reason. I don't understand it. That's why we need lawyers, I think, you know? Because, but the one thing that I kind of understand here, and really, it is, I could easily be convinced to support this amendment if I could understand it. But the one thing that says, we're saying we can't do judge shopping, but if I read this correctly, you can only do judge shopping once, because the one line there says, "If the motion or notice is duly presented, thereupon without any further act or proof." So you don't really have to say, they're really, without conflict, if you just don't like that judge, because, you know, he sanctioned you the last time, or what? Says, "Without any further act or proof, the judge or justice presiding, the appointment of a judge or justice shall in the normal course, without delay, assign some other judge or justice to try and cause or hear the matter." So that, there really, a conflict doesn't have to exist, if I understand this correctly, in order to disqualify a judge. So that, I think, you know, for me, is a little troublesome with regards to that, because it could actually cause greater delay in the case. But otherwise, I'm just not familiar with, with the rules of civil procedure. I'm sure there's, there definitely merit in what's being presented. I just can't grasp it all, I'm sorry to say. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much, Senator Pangolino. Senator Estaldon?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I too would have to object to this amendment. And, well, for one, definitely, without any, it states, "If the motion or notice duly presented without any further act or proof," it's like, wait a minute. You know, that's not right. If, if a case comes into the court, first of all, when we go through the whole process of nominating and confirming a judge to go into the court system, and whether judge or justice, once they enter into that, they're bound and they take oaths of office of impartiality. And so, and then there's a lot of case law and a lot of precedent that has already been set of when a judge should be accused and when he should be taken out of a case, right? We're arbitrary, arbitrary, letting parties come in and saying, well, I don't like that judge. Maybe, maybe because for fear that he, he is a tough judge. And that shouldn't be allowed. In other words, we would have to, we have to trust that the judges in there are impartial, you know, at the very onset. Now, if the, the party who wants to replace, to go before another judge, wants another judge, then he has to have some sure proof of why there is a prejudice, why he might be prejudiced, or why this judge might be impartial. But again, I can't see going into the court, and because you say there is, doesn't really mean that there is going to be any bias, that there is going to be any impartial, that there is going to be any partiality in the case. It doesn't make sense. It really doesn't make sense. So I would have to strongly object to this, because, again, within the court system, there is a very rich body of law upon which the courts rely on when a judge should not hear a particular case. And those arguments can very fully and well, be made well by the attorneys for the parties who go in and wish not to appear before this judge. And then it would be up to the judiciary, however they work it within them, whether it's assigned to another judge to hear the case, to then determine whether there is real cause to be concerned that this particular judge may have some prejudice or bias against a certain party. So I would have to strongly object to this. Thank you, Mrs.
Thank you very much, Senator Estaldon. Okay, on the amendment, if there's no other comment? Okay, there has been an objection. All those in favor of the amendment, raise your hands. One, two, three. Lost by a whisker. Just a whisker. Senator Frank Blas Jr.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, the next amendment that I'd like to propose is adding a new section to Chapter Six. And this is, I don't have any, so I'll just, I'll go ahead and just so that everybody can catch up with this, is section blank, Imaga La in Guam is authorized to transfer funds to the Government of Guam Retirement Fund to supplement the payment of retiree group health and dental insurance from savings as a result of active employee's health and dental insurance shift in coverage as stated by the Department of Administration in the Health Insurance Roundtable Meeting. Mr. Chairman, this amendment is proffered as a result of the discussions that we had in the roundtable meeting, where the Department of Administration had stated that there were , with the, with the plan as being proffered or being offered to the government of Guam employees and the retirees, there is going to be a savings on the, on the government contributions for the employees, and that the savings realized, although there's going to be savings realized, there is going to be an increase in the amount of healthcare coverage for the retirees. And what this amendment basically proffers is that if the increase, if there is such an increase, just so that we can continue to make sure that the retirees continue to get their medical health coverage, that the governor's authorized to transfer those savings over to the retirement fund to assist in being able to pay off the premiums due or the, for the health and dental insurance coverage for the retirees.
Okay, and there's no comment, no objection, amendment carries. Senator Blas?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, my next amendment is to add a new section, again, to Chapter Six. And this section is to read, "Of the sum appropriated to the Government of Guam Retirement Fund to supplement funding for retiree benefits, three million one hundred and three thousand four hundred and sixty dollars shall be transferred to the Department of Public Health and Social Services to supplement its operations for fiscal year 2008." Again, Mr. Chairman, this is as a result of the discussions that we had in the roundtable discussions on the healthcare insurance, and the concerns that we had with regards to how much it was going to cost for the Government of Guam was going to, it was going to cost the Government of Guam in as far as the distribution, the contributions for the healthcare, and most, especially in the retirement side, is that the retirees, according to Ms. Paula Blas of the Retirement Fund, we initially threw a, an amendment that was offered earlier in, in this committee as a whole, we had basically appropriated the sum of five million two, two hundred and ten thousand three hundred and nine dollars, and then in discussions with Paula Blas, she says all she needed was basically around one million, one point two million dollars. So what we're doing is we're taking the, the three point one million dollars in excess of the five and transferring that over to the Department of Public Health.
Okay, thank you very much. If there's no comment, no objection, amendment carries. Senator Blas? You were recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, the, my next amendment is, again, an amendment to add a new section to Chapter Six. And this is to authorization to pay for prior year's Medicare reimbursement. The Governor of Guam Retirement Fund is authorized to pay the following year's Medicare reimbursements from the appropriation contained in subsection H of section one of part two of chapter five of this act. And it's A, the amount of thirty-two thousand to fund the shortfall in the FY two thousand seven Medicare reimbursement, and B, the amount of twenty-three thousand to fund the shortfall in FY two six Medicare reimbursement. Again, Mr. Chairman, this amendment is basically offered so that we can continue to ensure that the, the, the Government of Guam, more specifically here, the Retirement Fund is able to pay for the healthcare, the continued healthcare of our retirees.
Okay, no comment, no objection, amendment carries. Yeah, one, one more.
One more. Okay. Okay, the last one, Mr. Chairman, is to add a new section to Chapter Six. And this section, basically, is to amend section one zero three, one zero two C of chapter one oh three of Title I of Guam Code annotated, to read, "The commissioner shall have the following minimum qualifications." And if you, for my colleagues, so that I, but what it basically does is two things here, is in that line where it says, "The commissioner shall have the following minimum qualifications, a total of ten years of experience in a managerial or in one or both of the following areas," that was a little bit of a confusion there. Is it one or both, or is it, is it either or? You know, if it's one or, is it both needed, or is it just one? That's the first one. So what we did is I struck out "or both." And the second amendment to the section is basically to add on number three, "Experience in the regulation of financial institution and companies that transact insurance, securities, and banking, and real estate in the effort of protecting consumers." Mr. Chairman, this was, this amendment is being proffered, being offered as, at the request of some of the discuss, as a result of discussions that we have with the Department of Revenue and Taxation, and this is regards to the Banking and Insurance Commission.
Okay. On the amendment, Senator Ristichow?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I wish the explanation was as simple, and I wish I could agree with the previous speaker's comments one hundred percent. The other thing I think should be pointed out, if this amendment were to pass in section three by adding totally new qualifications for this position, I believe this legislature would be dumbing down the requirements of the Insurance and Banking Commissioner. If the problem is the reading in one or, or both of the following, and I'm not sure how revenue tax applies this right now, if they're applying one, number one, or number two, or both, I, I see it as they must meet, because originally, it's item one and item two. If they have item one qualified, and then they have additional qualifications in item two, that's probably how they're reading it. However, to add a totally new section and just say, in one of the following, this individual could just qualify based on the new requirements in subsection three, which are lesser requirements than in those in item one and item two. So my first amendment would be to delete section three, because I don't believe it should be within our purview at this juncture to dumb down the requirements of the Insurance Commissioner. Very, very, yeah.
Okay, on the amendment to the amendment, we have Senator Pangolino? To delete section three? On the amendment to the amendment? Okay, the amendment, the amendment to delete section number three.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I, I want to kind of maybe provide some insight in terms of the application of these and, and so forth. Section three, section one and two, basically, in my opinion, guarantees that the Insurance Commissioner will come from outside. They will come from the private sector, employees of companies, basically, because it's very hard, there is no one, and very selective in the Government of Guam that, where you can get any kind of government service. So you're always going to get somebody from the industry. And I think that section three would allow service within the regulatory areas of the government to kind of rise through the ranks and through one of these qualify for that. So it allows career service employees in the Government of Guam, or in any other government entity, can ascend to this position. Otherwise, in order to get these experiences outlined in one and two, I would say that ninety percent of the time, you can only, you can only get this experience by working for a private company. So it basically throws and allows some government service in the regulatory side of the insurance and banking industry to qualify you for a position to rise up through the ranks. So that's, that's the, in my reading, that's what would be the effect of this, and I support the amendment. I mean, I support keeping it in.
Thank you. Senator Estaldon?
Actually, the previous speaker just echoed my sentiments, so I don't need to speak along those lines. I do support this. However, there is one, well, we're actually on the amendment to the amendment, right? Oh, okay. Well, then, thank you. I have no more to say. I, I support leaving it in also.
All right, thank you. Senator Palacios, you're up, sir.
I do the same thing, but I think we have to settle with the Ristichow amendment. I, I oppose the Ristichow amendment, so we can vote that and get on with a different amendment.
Okay. Senator Calv?
Yeah, I'm going to have to repeat some of the statements made by the earlier senators. The, if we were to delete the section three, which is, again, obviously, the new designation for experience for this representative, it would take out, you know, the, some very experienced workers that we currently have now within the administration, within the Government of Guam, that have regulated businesses and entities over years. I think with this language in, as is, would it allow for an opportunity for a cross-section of professionals within our community to service and administer this division? So again, I, I don't feel we should, we should write off many professionals that we have in current government services. So I'm, I'm very, very much against the amendment as offered by the senator to delete section three.
Okay, so on the amendment to the amendment, is that the final discussion on it? Anybody else? Okay, let's vote on it. Who supports the amendment to the amendment?
Can I, can I speak on it? On the amendment to the amendment?
Yes.
Okay. The amendment to the amendment was to delete item three, right?
Yes.
If I can speak on it?
Senator Blas, you haven't spoken on the amendment to the amendment.
On the amendment to the amendment, I haven't spoken.
So Senator Blas, you haven't spoken on it. So Senator Blas?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, with regards to, I'd just like to, please advise my colleagues that with regards to deleting item number three to this amendment, basically, in essence, nullifies the whole intent and the whole, the whole purpose for this amendment. And, and I, you know, I want to appreciate, and I appreciate, you know, the good senator from Baragana, in as far as recognizing that, you know, this, we've got some very able, able and capable individuals within the government service, and what this basically provides is that it's very difficult for them to be able to qualify based on experiences outlined in one and two, because that's basically from outside the government. Item number three basically provides an individual for upward mobility within the government entities to be able to assume this position. So again, I'd like to caution our colleagues that in, with regards to any movement to delete section three of this amendment would basically, in essence, bring this whole, whole reason for this amendment to be up, to be up. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Senator. Again, on the amendment to the amendment? The amendment to the amendment is to strike item three. And with that is Senator Tina Rose Munia Barnes. No. Senator, Senator? Senator Munia Barnes, you're recognized. On the amendment to the amendment? Okay. Oh, yeah, you're right. Okay. Okay. So on the amendment to the amendment, there was an objection? Okay, so those in favor of the amendment, show of hands. One, two, three. The amendment to the amendment fails. On the main amendment, Senator Palacios?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, it was previously stated by members of this body that without item number three, actually, you're looking at status quo. And it, the way it is right now is very biased without the inclusion of item number three is very biased, because then you have to look from outside. What about those seasoned officers right now with whom we rely to look at our record and examine our tax structure? Item number three would allow this government to consider those seasoned officials to participate and perhaps compete for the position. right now with whom we rely to, to look at our record and examine our tax structure? Item number three would allow this government to consider those seasoned officials to participate and, and perhaps compete for the position. And so I support the amendment, uh, as it is, uh, to include item number three. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Thank you very much, um, Senator Palacios. Senator Espaldón on the amendment.
Actually, this is very, thank you, Mr. Chairman, but this is very minor. I just need to, uh, and it's more technicality. After, to be consistent, after number two at the very end where it says Guam, I believe that a semicolon should be inserted, and then the word "or." And that's, that's all. Sorry, where? Under item number, under item number two, after item number two, instead of a period, it should be a semicolon, and then the word "or."
Okay.
Just for grammatical, uh, correctness.
You got that?
Thank you.
Okay, so we are, go for a reset. We'll have a one-minute recess. On the main amendment, there's been an objection. All those in favor of the amendment as proffered, raise your hands. One, one, two, three, four, five, six. Where's the dial phone? One, two, one, two, three, four, five, six. Yeah. Okay. Even with a dial. Okay, amendment fails. Okey-dokey. Okay, Senator Frank Ijizaki.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Um, I got amendment, uh, on, um, to amend section blank of Chapter Six, to read of the sum appropriated to the Department of Administration for Training of Government Accountants in Section Twenty-two of Part Two of Chapter Five of this Act. The sum of $10,000 shall be for DOA's Division of Training and Development, for training, equipment, replacement of damaged training participant chairs and tables, and repair of its training room. This appropriation shall not be subject to the Governor's Transfer Authority.
Okay. I'm sorry, I, I'm looking for that amendment. Senator, uh, my apologies. What, where? Can we take a minute recess to get that one? I don't have a copy of it.
It's for DOA.
Okay, no co, uh, no, no objection. Amendment carries. Senator Ijizaki, uh, continue, please. You have another amendment? Oh, you have a few more?
Okay, this next one is, um, is for Senator Palacios. I'm, I'm, I'm the, I'm the anchor guy. Uh, it's, it's to amend, uh, Chapter Six, for Chapter Six miscellaneous provisions to read as follows. Imaga Lahim Guam shall transfer pursuant to the transfer authority provided herein $96,000 from FY-008 General Fund Executive Branch Appropriation into Guam Fire Department for pay differentials for firefighters trained in EMT one level for the purpose of implementing, implementing div, provisions of Public Law Twenty-eight Fifty-four.
Okay, on the, uh, Ijizaki amendment, Senator Palacios.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, Public, Public Law Twenty-eight Dash Fifty-four actually formalized into law the classification EMT-one. Prior to that, for the last four years, it was, it was, uh, on a so-called pilot program, and it's working. So the passage of Public Law Twenty-eight Dash Fifty-four formalized that position, but on Section Four, then it provides for a funding. But Section Four actually expired, because the, it says there, the Magalahin Guam is hereby authorized to transfer. And that was the language, and it really levered material, the, the governor did not exercise such authority. And the other issue, uh, with the current bill was the, the technical error in the EMT. It, it actually says EM-one on the statute. Now, this proposal, this amendment would reactivate that, and now it would read the Magalahin Guam shall transfer. At that time, it was not, it determined the ninety-six thousand per year, uh, would be, would be required, of course, to compensate on a pay differential, those certified EMT. And by the way, this EMT, they are, they're getting certified on their, at their own cost, just to qualify for assignment of EMT level one. And so this amendment, uh, again, would put life back into it, uh, with amended that the governor shall transfer ninety-six thousand, uh, pursuant, of course, to public law, to, to, to a provision in Public Law Twenty-eight Dash Fifty-four. And, and again, it, it corrected the EMT dash one level instead of the current law EM-one only. And so that, that is the amendment. It's actually an administrative amendment, it's a technical amendment. Uh, the budget is, it, it, no, no budget implication here. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you very much, Senator Ijizaki. No other comment? No objection? Amendment carries. Senator Ijizaki?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The next one concerns the Guam Education Policy Board, uh, concerning reappr, reapportion. The Guam Education Policy Board shall perform the duties required by Section Three, One, Three, D, for the two thousand census until, not later than March thirty-one of two thousand eight. And, and currently, Mr. Chair, the, uh, apportionment of, of the school districting, districting is based on a nineteen-ninety, uh, census.
Okay. On the Ijizaki amendment, any comment? No comment? No objection? No objection? Amendment carries. Thank you for giving me the third copy of the same amendment. Okay. Senator Ijizaki.
Oh, we're done with that? Hang on a second, Mr. Chair, I'm, I'm getting myself organized here.
Okay.
Oh, we did that already.
That's why they keep on passing out the same amendment.
Yeah, 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 okay. Just disregard, on the modification? No. Mr. Chair, this next one is, is to amend section, uh, to add to Section Six, or Chapter Six miscellaneous provisions, modification of plan expenditures.
Okay.
Is that done already? Mr. Chair, should we take a one-minute recess?
Let's take a one-minute break. One-minute recess. Ready? Committee of the Hall, okay, Committee of the Hall is back in order. We are again in the Ijizaki amendment. I'm not too sure where we left off. Okay, Frank? Actually, no, I think you spoke. So if there's no comment? No, is there no objection? Okay, motion carries. Amendment carries. Senator Ijizaki?
That was good. Congratulations, Bertha. This is the, that was the Bertha amendment. Well done.
Two more.
Two more, okay. This next one, Mr. Chair, is to, uh, amend Chapter Six to read, this is concerning, um, qualifying certificates. A temporary moratorium in the issuance of qualifying, qualifying certificates shall not apply to new and emerging industries. New and emerging industries for purposes of this section is defined. Everybody have a copy of it?
It's been passed out.
It's been passed out.
It should be.
I know, you, you got a stack. It's probably disappeared somewhere else.
Oh, um, I have it here. The temporary moratorium in the issuance of qualifying certificates shall not apply to new and emerging industries. Senator Shimizu, this looks awfully familiar to something you were talking to me about earlier.
Everybody have it? Okay.
Okay. Okay, so everyone has the amendment. Senator Tina Rose Munia Bar, uh, would you care to speak on it, Senator?
Um, as long as everybody understands, what we're trying to do is, is, we, we do understand the provisions of the cor, current, uh, moratorium on QC's. However, I think we've got to remember that, that there is a penalty for, for, uh, future industry who plan to come to Guam. The attractiveness of our island for future investments for new and emerging industries is, is a necessary part of QC's, and the moratorium is going to adversely affect that growth potential for our economy. So, uh, if, you know, I hope my colleagues will support it.
Okay, thank you very much, Senator Ijizaki. No comment? There's been an objection to the amendment. Show of hands. No, no, we've already, with you speak? Okay, you're, you're okay? Senator Shimizu, Senator Shimizu, you have the floor.
Turn off that, because I'm just gonna lay the foundation. You know, I, I, uh, Mr. Speaker, I really stand in support of this. And then let me tell you why, so the people can understand what it basically is saying. The temporary moratorium on the issuance of qualifying certificates shall not apply to new and emerging industries. New and emerging industries for purposes of this section is defined as any taxable income that is not part of the Guam territorial income tax base for tax years ending July first, two thousand and seven, for which the taxpayer is required to file an income tax, uh, return. Now, Mr. Speaker, why, the reason why I, 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 I support the, um, the amendment for new and emerging industries, I know that we are, uh, we've had legislation earlier that placed the moratorium in order to be able to evaluate the, um, uh, the, uh, Senator Perez's original bill, uh, and the intended and all amendments thereafter. That was the, the QC. To be able to see in, in the new twenty-first century.
Oh, Frank Perez.
Frank Perez, Senator Perez. Let's not forget Senator Frank Perez. He was the author, the father of, of the QC, you know, and, and, and what we're doing now is to have, uh, be able to go back and look and bring it into the twenty-first century. But while we're doing that, while we're doing that in tight economic times, and some people that is new, that wants to come in and invest, we don't want to say to them, "Nang na hao zeh?" Because we're doing inventory? Says, "Yes, but I want to come in and invest in, in the territory." All this does is to allow new and emerging. It's not to, uh, to go back and give a new qualifying certificate to people who may have had it. And I think it really is foolhardy if we didn't leave the, that opportunity. You know, opportunity may be knocking at the door, and we say, "I'm sorry, it's closed." You know what the rippling effect would go out into, to the world of, of, of investors? It might say, "You know, Guam is not really serious about new and emerging industries. Guam is, uh, doesn't really, uh, take it seriously, because we've got to come back in May." But you know, in the business community, as I understand it, money is time, and time is money. And we must be, uh, uh, was that business-friendly to be able to bring in new money. Like, uh, Frankie Ijizaki said, you know, he wants new money in here. He doesn't want to have funny money, you know, in terms, and we need to get new monies, and the only way we get new monies is to bring in new and emerging. Why are we going to block new and emerging? I don't, I, I, I think we continue to evaluate, uh, Senator Frank Perez's QC to see if it needs to be adjusted or tweaked for the twenty-first century. But let's keep the store open for new and emerging. So thank you, uh, uh, Mr. Chairman. And I hope that we vote, you know, I hope we can get eight to vote on this amendment to keep Guam open. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Senator Shimizu. Senator Tenorio?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I echo the sentiments of the, the retiring, um, speaker, and I, I wanted to say also that, you know, there's many opportunities for the island to, um, possibly capture additional business here in, uh, desalinization plant, um, other, uh, activities that may be possible here, uh, for the island to generate, um, money. Um, we, we should, we shouldn't close the program entirely. Um, I realize that the preceding, um, um, several amendments prior actually did put the moratorium on the QC in the, uh, until May of next year, at which point the recommendations will be acted on or not acted on by this body, and then the QC program will go forward from there. But I do think that, uh, we should try to keep, uh, an open mind about, uh, new and emerging industries to come to the island and potentially be able to, um, be able to get some of the same advantages of many of the industries that currently are here in Guam are, are enjoying. And I think that this is something that we should definitely, uh, adopt, and I ask my colleagues to please consider this for new and emerging industries. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Senator Tenorio. Uh, Senator Palacios?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I, I'm inclined to support this amendment, however, I'd like to offer an amendment to the amendment, which is actually to replace the last sentence there with, the last sentence where it says, "GK has the authority to deny any qualifying certificate," and just replace that whole sentence with this one. "Any application that does not comply with the provision of this section shall be void." I mean, whether GK exercises its authority to deny, it should be in material at this point. Somehow, somewhere, someone has to prove that the application is void. It is, it's not complying with this section, and it should automatically be voided.
So you're to take out the last sentence?
I, I think it's just strengthening the safeguard against, again, potential, I guess, misuse of this provision. Uh, just, the last sentence.
Can you say that one more time?
Replace the last sentence with this. "Any application," and you know, where it says, "Qualifying certificate applic," just connect that. "Any application that does not comply with the provision of this section shall be void."
Okay. On the amendment to the amendment, sen, amendment to the amendment, Senator Pangolinan?
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I object to the amendment, because of course, what this does, Mr. Speaker, is allows, for example...
On the amendment to the amendment?
Oh, no, not on the amendment.
Oh, we're still the amendment to the amendment.
Okay.
On the amendment to the amendment. If there's no objection to the amendment to the amendment, it, the amendment to the amendment car, uh, is passed. Senator Palacios, you still have the microphone.
That's all. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you very much. On the main amendment, Senator Pangolinan?
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I think this is just a very creative way of allowing, uh, companies, new companies that buy existing companies, who are now new companies, they're not part of the Guam income tax base, then they can apply for a QC and get one. That's really what it is. It just allows them to circumvent the, the moratorium, uh, because it just says they're not part of the Guam income tax base system. Of course, if you're a new company, you form yourself today, you buy some couple of new companies, you apply for a QC, uh, you're not part of the income tax base, so you, you el, you're eligible for one, and yet you're buying an existing company. So that really is, I think, a creative way, and I, I'm, I'm just amazed at the creative way that the governor's committed to do a moratorium on QC's, because he says he's committed. Yet we keep getting, you know, uh, trying to find a way to get out of that commitment or demonstrate that commitment in a way that opens the doors for the, for whatever, whoever. So I just think that, you know, it, it really does allow those kind of shenanigans to be played by this amendment, and I think that that's really what we don't want. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Senator Pangolinan. Senator Respechel?
Thank you very much, um, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I perfectly understand what the whole qualifying certificate program, uh, is for. It's there where, where we can entice businesses to come to Guam, where they could, uh, new, new industries, uh, some areas that we wanted, uh, to have a QC was for the recycling, uh, uh, centers there at the Port Authority of Guam. Now, we wanted to entice that kind of, uh, uh, opportunity for the recycling, uh, entities. And, and we understand the whole purpose of the QC, but the problem really has been monitoring and enforcement. And, uh, there, by majority, this legislature decided to support us, and bill by Speaker Pangolinan that would put a moratorium until such time, uh, they can go back and, and analyze whether or not certain aspects of this QC program, uh, needs to be amended. Uh, that bill has been vetoed by the governor, and we have an opportunity to address whether or not that bill, that veto will be overridden. But I just cannot support this amendment, uh, being proffered by the good senator, because basically, it, it says new and emerging, uh, industries. We understand how important that is, but like the previous speaker said, all they have to do is form another, uh, corporation that's not already part of the tax base, and they'll qualify. Uh, this amendment gets, uh, high marks for creativity, but I cannot lend my support for it. I cannot lend my support for the existing, uh, QC program, which renews existing industries. And we see many abuses. I think this is one of the most highly abused government, uh, program there is so far. And if we don't get a handle on this, we're losing millions and millions of dollars of our tax base that is not necessarily, uh, consistent with what the whole intent of the QC program was to begin with. That's to develop new industries. And so this amendment just offers status quo, more of the same, plot the author, extremely creative, but I'm not going to support it.
Okay. Okay, thank you very much, Senator Respechel. That concludes all comments. There has been an objection. All those in favor? Oh, you want to close it? Sure, Senator.
Yeah, let me, let me just respond.
I'll allow you to close, Senator. I'm sorry, my apologies.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, the argument that, that, uh, new company, uh, you know, when a new company comes in, they can create a new company, a new tax base, but, but when you acquire an existing company, that, that tax base is already in existence, so you're not going to affect that. I mean, that scheme is going to die with this provision, and, and the future amendments, I welcome with, with what Senator Ben wants to do, but the basic intent of this is to continue to encourage growth and opportunities for new industries to come to Guam, to increase our econ, economy and our employment. So I, I hope my colleagues will support it.
Okay. Okay. Okay, thank you very much, Senator Ishizaki. Again, there was an objection called, so show of hands, all those in favor of the amendment, show of hands? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Motion fails. Senator Ishizaki? Senator Ishizaki, you still have amendments? I know how you feel, it's happened a lot to me, too. Don't worry.
And this is not new to me, Mr. Chairman. This is not new to me, I'm always coming up one short.
Especially if we don't have a majority. Senator Ishizaki?
This next one, Mr. Chair, is procurement matter for GSA to amend Section 5122 of Title V. And it's, GSA shall procure supplies for U.S. and United States from when costs of the General Services Agency is less than 10% from other contractors. And basically, it's going to allow our local vendors to compete and to allow us to procure, to approve procurement through a federal GSA, and then our local vendors would have a 10% cushion over that.
Okay, thank you very much, Senator Ishizaki. Senator Blas?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm a little confused here. Can, if the author of the amendment can yield to a question?
Can you state the question?
Question is basically is, what are you amending?
Would you care to yield to the question there, Senator?
It's going, you know what, you're right. I think the language on this is terrible, so we'd better withdraw it and start from scratch.
Thank you, I'm sorry.
So, there's been a motion to, okay, let's go back to, Senator Blas, so you're making a motion to withdraw? Is there any objection to the motion to withdraw? Okay. You still have a, Senator Ishizaki, you have one more amendment?
This one is a hot potato. No, you're right, you know, we should proofread our products sometimes. This final one is to address volunteer transfer of annual leave, to amend Section 4109.2 of Chapter 4. And I hope you all have it. And it's really, you know, Mr. Chair, we've had problems with abuse of transferred leave, and I hope this will address some of those problems.
Okay, on the Ishizaki amendment, Senator Tina Rose Munia Barnes?
Sidoz Masi, Mr. Chair, and the good author of this legislation is probably going to be surprised, because I do rise in support of the amendment. And I do have an amendment, I'd like to offer an amendment to this amendment, and it specifically says, I guess, on the last paragraph of this amendment where it reads, "Participation in leave-sharing program shall not exceed the 90 days." I'd like to amend it and say, and it will read in this effect, "Participants in the leave-sharing program, strikeout shall not exceed the 90 working days, shall require a certification from the attending medical doctors that the receipt of the leave needs additional time for medical treatment or recovery from a medical illness and is physically unable to return to work due to the medical illness, and then strike out the additional and additional 90 days, all the way down to the time..."
Oh, is it written? Oh, it's yours, okay, oh, it's written now, okay, so it's going to be cut paste, okay.
Yes, written down. And the reason why I say that, it just adds more teeth to this provision, Mr. Chair, and I think it's important, it was passed out?
Yeah, I don't have it, let's have a minute recess.
Senator Munia Barnes?
The committee of the hall is back in order. Everyone has a copy of the amendment to the amendment as offered by Senator Rose, Tina Rose Munia Barnes. Senator Barnes?
Sidoz Masi, talo, Mr. Chair, and I really appreciate this opportunity, and I understand this is probably going to bring up a lot of conversation and debate deliberation on this, but I think it's really important, as again, I bring this attention to great matter, as I've, I have been in communication or had communication with previous employees who were on extended leave off-island for medical reasons, and because of one reason or another, were put into added stress even when documentation was received by the medical authority and the, physically, the patients were not able to return, but the agencies continue to say, "Well, you know, your time is up." And I just think it's important that we think about the compassion, we think about the medical illness. Nobody wants to be sick, Mr. Chair. And I offer this amendment because I think it's really important that when you receive that additional time for medical treatment that is needed and is supported by that attending physician who certifies that this patient needs that time, I think it's really important, Mr. Chair, that we carefully look at this matter. And again, I'm going to ask, like I said, I rise in support of the main amendment, but I ask that my colleagues consider that. Senator Rory Rispicio, the good senator from Agania Hides, and the good senator from Inaraan, help author this amendment with me, and I thank them for that, and I just think it's important that we really do at least take the time to look at our employees who really need that medical attention. A lot of them are off-island. A lot of our employees are suffering from cancer at a very young age, and a lot of them don't have the time to come home, get clearances here, then go back again. I've had a constituent that literally died because of the stress, not one, but two in the last couple of months. And it just, it just aches me, and that's why I proffered this amendment. And I think if you can hold the accountability and transparency in certification with the attending physician or with the off-island or on-island, then that should be merit enough to believe that this employee is sick and not take that away from him. So, again, I hope my colleagues consider that, and I hope they vote for the amendment to the amendment. Sidoz Masi, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. On the amendment to the amendment, Senator Palacios?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I favor leaving the statute as it is. I remember in the last legislature when we added the other, another 90 days, and that's three months, and then another 30 days, that actually will be a total of seven months. There has to be a balance between the interest of the employee and the interest of government service. And I think to remove this altogether would really place an unfair burden on the government, on the entity that has to continue to pay for an absent employee when that absent employee after seven months of sickness probably should better all be on medical retirement. And I believe that this will just encourage further what appears to be an abuse of this program. This is a very noble program, but it has to have its limit. And so, I rise, I rise in opposition of the objection to striking this out. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, Senator Palacios. Senator Tenorio?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, we had long debates about this in the previous legislature, as my retiring speaker, a good gentleman from Word of Chalapago was mentioning. And the reason that these things were put in place is, in fact, it's abused. It is abused, and we know it's abused. The Department Administration knows it's abused. I personally know cases where it's been abused, because individuals are literally getting some doctor to get a certification, and if, the gentleman who just spoke is exactly right. We need employees of the government of Guam to do the job of the government of Guam. We need them to fill their positions. And we, after you get past your own leave, annual, sick, whatever leave that you can get, this allows for up to 90 days. That's three months. Then another 90 days, another three months. Then you get 90 days, another three months, and then add 30 days on top of that. So, you've got 10 months of leave allowed, and we're not talking about a, we're not talking about 30 days, it's a calendar, we're talking about 30 workdays. So, do the math. We're not talking about a short period of time. We're allowing the individual to use the entirety of their leave for whatever medical expenses are needed. But in the public service, we need the service part of it to be there. It's not about lack of compassion, it's not a lack of empathy, it's about abuse in the system. And we've tried to put the measures in here to allow for an individual to actually receive leave, to go, to get treatment, to be able to go and see a doctor. But there is an end at some point to this process. If we adopt the amendment that's put before us, this is an indefinite amount of time. The employee can receive leave literally until they can't receive leave anymore, and that's only when they stop getting leave. So, if we open this up, it becomes an abyss, a endless, bottomless pit from which an individual can go and, you know, to solicit leave for many number of employees for all the government of Guam. And then the other component of this, aside from the fact that, you know, the issue of the endless leave, you also have the fact that individuals are actually giving leave at a much, much lower rate to an individual at a much higher rate, and actually capitalizing on that money. And we're talking about literally what amounts to a scam. And so, at this point, Mr. Chairman, I think releasing these timeframes on this thing would be absolutely sending the wrong message, and I completely oppose this amendment.
Okay, thank you very much, Senator Rispicio, I mean Senator Tenorio, Senator Rispicio?
Thank you very much, Ms. Speaker. Ms. Speaker, I applaud Senator Munia Barnes for offering this amendment. I want to further applaud her for her consistency. If you recall, what she's attempting to do here is to restore the original language of this annual volunteer transfer of annual leave program. In the 27th Guam Legislature, we're aware of several cases where our local families, when they get sick, they get cancer. Our island has high incidences of cancer, Ms. Speaker. Our island has high incidence of diabetes where they have to seek an extended care off-island, and we're aware of individuals who are off-island, they have all the annual leave donated by their coworkers, their family or friends, but yet because of the original 90-day cutoff, they couldn't avail themselves to this kind of program. Then in the 27th Legislature, we were able to get an additional 90-day extension. That wasn't enough, Mr. Speaker. And then in the last legislature, after much heated debate, just like the one we're having now, the most we could get is an additional 30 working days. Everybody talks about how there's been abuses in the programs. This program requires that they have a doctor's note submitted, and both the director of the employee and the director of the donor must certify that this transaction is able to take place. There's also prohibitions against supervisors donating their leaves to their subordinates and vice versa to prevent any kind of bad situations in that working environment. Mr. Chairman, plain and simple, I think this legislature should recognize the opportunity to just restore this law to how it was originally introduced. And the first 90-day prohibition cap was a reaction, a reaction to one or two individuals who are caught with abuses, but then this program has those kinds of provisions to prevent abuses, and the main amendment would further tighten that. But I just don't think that we should throw the baby out with the bathwater, and I just don't think that we should allow to have these current, um, um, would you like that? I just don't think we should have all these cap. And so, the basis, the, plain and simple, Ms. Speaker, the individual, if they have the annual leave, if they have the doctor's note, if they have all these requirements, let the amount of annual leave they get drive the number of days that'll be available to this program and not the other way around. Some maximum here is 10 months. What if they don't even have enough annual leave to carry them for 10 months? So, the basis of this should really be the amount of annual leave that they're able to get, as well as the doctor's certification and approvals from the directors of both entities. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Senator Shimizu, I mean Senator Rispicio. Senator Shimizu?
Thank you very much. Mr. Chairman, if I understand correctly, that leave times are earned. Am I not correct? It's earned, it's already in the book. I mean, that's something that, it's only one government where the rate of annual leaves are being given to the employee. So, if we put timelines on this, 90 days, 30 days, two weeks from this day, you know, when you're sick, you're thinking about trying to get well, and you know, how long is it that this is going to be, the question was, if you're sick? How long is it going, in some cases, until you're dead? I mean, is that what we want? Report back to duty, because your 90 days, 90 days or two weeks expire? You know, it's already earned, it's in the books. It's something that the employee worked for, and if they want to give it to their twin loved one who's had a kidney transplant and is having complications, we're going to say that that might be an abuse? Because sometimes we look very healthy on the outside, but eternally, we may be having some very catastrophic illness. The sick leave is already earned, and if you go to your brothers or your relatives and ask for that because you're still, I mean, people just don't like to go, but what else do we have? So, we set up artificial, we become now the rationing of sometimes of this very catastrophic thing, it's already in the books, whether they use it or not, you know? I ask my colleagues who, you know, only look on the side of the ugliness of a human being, of that, of abuse. What is the abuse? If that was why we should not give the people what they've already earned and may get from one another, another humanitarian, then put provisions that will prevent the abuse, but don't deny people who are caught in this long-term catastrophic kind of illness. It's already booked, we've earned it already. They've earned it, and if the friend or relative responds to any humanitarian request to transfer their leave, it's already in the books. It's already in books. And I prefer to err on humanitarian and compassion than to look at our fellow human beings in a way that this is just going to be abuse. Thank you, Mr. Speaker, and I hope people reconsider their opposition to this amendment.
Okay, thank you very much, Senator Shimizu. Senator Guthertz? No, we can't make an amendment to the amendment to the amendment, we are, an amendment to the amendment. Are you speaking on the amendment to the amendment? Can't do it. Okay, Senator Guthertz?
If it's regarding the amendment, Mr. Chairman, I will not object to the amendment if I can later introduce my amendment as part of this new section. I think this will solve a lot of concerns that the senators have.
Okay, thank you very much, Senator Guthertz. If there's no other speakers, Senator Rose, Tina Rose Munia Barnes wishes to close on Senator, you have the floor.
You know, Mr. Chair, Mr. Speaker, I stand to close on this amendment to the amendment, and, you know, when family and friends, employees, coworkers come to the assistance of an elderly, ailing employee or coworker to assist in helping their recovery and are willing from their hearts to give, then I don't see why we have to take that away from them. Mr. Chair, we don't have to look far. We don't have to look far in our community, in the closest of this body of what's happening. And you know what? I'd be guilty of taking something away if I know that there is an employee or a member that I can help assist, give them that leave so that they can help in the recovery of their family or friend or coworker. Mr. Chair, I would not be, I don't want to be responsible for violating that and taking that gift away. And I only ask that my colleagues really take the time to reconsider this amendment and know that they really don't even have to look far outside this body, to know that sometimes our people need that extra time. And if there is going to be an abuse, then have a section... then have a section for that. But I need you to know that we shouldn't put a timeline for the recovery and for the help for our own employees who want to get better and come back to work. And that's why I offered this amendment to this amend- to the amendment. And I, that's why I rise in support of this amendment. But I know in my heart that this is the right thing to do. And, Mr. Chair, we really don't even have to look far. Even in this room, we don't have to look far. And I hope my colleagues support this amendment. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Senator, uh, Tina Rose Munia Barnes. There has been an objection to the amendment, uh, to the amendment. So with that, uh, will she have a show of hands? Two, three, four, five, six. Motion, uh, the amendment to the amendment fails. On the main amendment, on the main amendment, we, uh, we have Senator, uh, Senator, on the main amendment, I think Senator Pangolin, did you have your hand up? On the main amendment, Senator Pangolin. Oh, Sen- oh, I'm sorry, Senator Guthertz.
Mr. Chairman, I'm, I'm very saddened that my colleagues' amendment to the amendment didn't pass. I thought it was very, uh, considerate. But regardless of that, Mr. Chairman, the subject has sort of taken on some controversy, in some ways unfairly, to the majority of the employees of the government of Guam, who really treat with respect the benefits that they rece- receive, including their annual leave and their sick leave. There are a few, however, who have abused this, uh, benefit, and have gone to the extreme of occasionally selling their annual leave and sick leave for a price to other people that need it. In order to help reduce the, uh, abuse and to protect those employees who participate in this program in a very honorable way, I have, uh, before, Mr. Chairman, a brief amendment to the, uh, to the, uh, amendment being proposed, which would basically just become an additional section. And the language is very simple. This would be the language. It shall be illegal for any employees of the government of Guam to sell their unused annual leave or sick leave to another employee in exchange for any monies or materials of value. This provision shall apply to all government employees in classified, appointed, elected, unclassified, contractual, and limited-term positions, and in all branches of the government of Guam, including line departments and agencies, autonomous agencies, public corporations, and all other government instrumentalities. Violations of this provision shall be prosecutable. Now, I think, uh, if we look at this objectively and we, uh, adopt this as part of this, uh, section that's being proposed, I think, I think that, uh, it will provide assurances to the community at large and to the honorable employees of our government that, uh, we support the sharing of leave as long as it's done for humanitarian purposes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, on, uh, Senator Guthertz's amendment to the amendment, Senator Palacios?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Of course, I rise in support of this amendment with just, uh, one request to in- to insert, uh, on, on line four. It says here, "in exchange for any monies." If you can just insert there, "favor," and then comma, "or materials of value." Favor can be a very valuable item, and I think that that would just make sure that even for favor, you know, that it's included, and that's-
Is that strictly, it's a techni- you're, you're looking for a technical-
Not for an insertion of that word.
Where, where, I'm sorry?
Between it, on the line four, "in, in exchange for any monies," comma, and then insert "favor." If, if you favor, comma, and then "or materials of value." Favor.
Favor.
In exchange, not even in exchange of favor.
Favor.
Favor, favor.
Favor, okay. Or materials of value, okay. No objection?
That's okay.
Okay. Um, Senator Palacios, is that it? Okay, on the amendment by Senator Guthertz. To the amendment, um. Senator Tenorio?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Ms. Chairman, I support the amendment, except that we, um, do need to do some, um, tweaking of the language, only because, what does it mean to be illegal? Is it a violation? It is a misdemeanor? Is it a felony? Um, does this constitute a crime under the, um, official misconduct? Um, I, I don't think this is something we can simply leave to the legal counsel. I, I appreciate where we're going, but, um, I need to know exactly what the final destination is. And so I think we need to take a break just to clean us up a little bit, maybe get some input from some of our, um, legal advisors.
We'll take a cou- few minutes recess. Your other amendment and Committee of the Hall is back in order. Senator Guthertz?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. In consultation with my colleagues, uh, I would like to withdraw the earlier amendment.
Okay, no, no, uh, no objection, okay.
And, Ms. Chairman, I'd like to offer this new amendment, which would become part of this, this, uh, overall amendment and would be, uh, numbers one and two. And, uh, if anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to read it. But if there's none-
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay, so there's no objection to the amendment to the amendment? Okay. Amendment to the amendment carries. On the main amendment, uh, Senator Pangolin, on the main amendment?
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker and, uh, Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to provide an amendment to the amendment also. I'm a little concerned just on the one section, which, uh, says, "No recipient shall receive donated lease from donors whose hourly rates of pay or salaries are lower than the recipient." And I think what this does, uh, and presents to me is, you know, not all of us are, um, are, uh, fortunate to have friends that are all earn the same as we do. Some of, sometimes our friends are those who earn less than us, and, uh, or our family members and so forth. And they may wanna donate to us, uh, at the lower rate of, uh, at their lower salaries, uh, but this would prohibit that. And sometimes if that's all you have, that's all you can get, you know, that's all you need and all you want. And so what the amendment, uh, I'm proposing would replace that language to, uh, ensure that, uh, these individuals can continue to donate, uh, but, uh, would make sure that they're paid at the hourly rate of the donor. So, leave transferred from donors whose hourly rates of pay or salaries are lower than the recipient shall be paid at the hourly rate or salary of the donor. And that leave transferred from donors whose hourly rates of pay or salaries are higher than the recipient, it shall be paid at the hourly rate of the recipient. So it just allows people with lower salaries to donate, uh, their leave to individuals who earn more than them, uh, because that's all they can give. And, uh, that's sometimes that's, that's what we need. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you very much, Senator Pangolin, on the amendment to the amendment. Senator Tenorio?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Ms. Chairman, I think it's a very, very good amendment. I really appreciate the, um, the effort that went into, um, crafting this. This is exactly what is needed. Um, and I think, uh, i- it will actually provide parity, um, and also a lot more accountability. And, um, I, I completely support this amendment, and I ask my colleagues to do the same. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Senator. Okay, on the amendment to the amendment, if there's no objection, no objection. Amendment to the amendment carries. On the main amendment, no objection? Amendment carries. Uh, the next one, Senator Tina Munia Barnes, you have a couple of, um, amendments.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Chair, Cisus Masi. Um, I have two amendments. My first amendment is, um, it adds a new section to Chapter Six on the miscellaneous provision, and it specifically says that the provision contained in Section Twenty-four of Chapter Four, Part Two, Miscellaneous Appropriations of the Public Law Twenty-eight dash one fifty shall continue until all sums appropriated therein are expended. The mayor of Aggett is authorized to u- utilize said funds to repair the Aggett basketball court restroom facility. Mr. Chair, after, um, uh, conversation with the mayor's council again, um, there was funds that were appropriated in Public Law Twenty-eight, one fifty. And what this does is, uh, continues to give the mayor of Aggett, uh, authorization to utilize the funds to continue to finish and, and, uh, repair the restroom facility at the basketball court in Aggett. And, and, um, Mr. Chair, as you know, um, the people of Aggett, uh, uh, the community of Aggett, uh, continue to utilize the facilities. They wanna, uh, fix their place up. The mayor has been a big, big advocate for, uh, recreational sports in her community, in her village, and I'm just hoping that my colleagues consider this provision, so it gives her that authorization to do so. And I'd ask my, my colleagues to vote for the amendment.
Okay, on the Senator Tina Rose Munia Barnes amendment, Senator Wampat?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And, Mr. Chairman, uh, I, I definitely support, uh, this amendment, amendment. Actually, if you recall, that this was, uh, funds that, uh, former Senator Lou Leonguero had basically deappropriated from her, uh, office to, to be able to do this. However, the, the mayor of, of Aggett actually met, ran into her last night, and one of the things she said is that, yes, aside from it being continued to, for her to allow her to continue to expend it, that it's not just only for the repair, but actually even for the operations of it, because, and utilities, because, uh, there, there would be sufficient funds to be able to use it in the evening, and it's got, they won't be able to do it if it's only just gonna say the repair, but the operation of the facility. So I wanted to- Did she want? So what I'd like to put in amendment is repair and, uh, to utilize funds, not just for the repair, but also to really operate the, the facility, yeah.
If there's no objection to the amendment? Okay, Senator?
I only object if I can have the bill before me.
Okay.
You know, so, can't say no objection.
Okay, so Senator Wampat, can you repeat your amendment there to?
The Aggett mayor, uh, the mayor of Aggett is authorized to utilize said funds to repair and, uh, and operate, you know, uh, the, the money to be used for repair and operations of the, uh, Aggett ba- basketball, basketball court restroom facility.
Senator?
Yeah, thank, thank you, uh. You know, unless we have somebody come up there and room you on this, but I just wanted to find out. I have no, uh, objection unto it, but just, let's just do like what we've done in all the others. Let's, uh, just continue until all sums appropriated therein is expended, period. You know, because then we can say, well, she's also authorized to use it to repair the basketball court. It just ended there, let her just use it the way she sees fits. Because once you just say she can only use it for the basketball court restroom and something else come up. So I wanted to give her more flexibility.
Oh, okay, I'm s- this thing is kinda gone, it's, we've gone from an amendment to amendment now. We're kinda denigrated. I'm just gonna call a minute recess, just do a little house cleaning.
Yeah.
Um.
Okay, the Committee of the Hall is back in order. Senator Wampat, I think you had some amendments.
Yes, I do. I want to withdraw that other amendment, and this is how it should read. The mayor of Aggett is authorized to utilize said funds to repair and maintain the Aggett basketball court and restroom facility.
I think that's perfectly fine, but Senator Shimizu obviously hasn't-
But you know what, Mr. Chairman? I wanted to say that that, as, as a result of our one-minute recess, we made it even better. You know, because it gave more flexibility rather than just a focus on, on, on that one area. So I have no problems with, with that amendment.
Thank you very much. So if there's no objection to the amendment, to the amendment, alright. Really, do you really wanna close this? Senator Tina Rose Munia Barnes?
Mr. Chair, I want to take the time to thank my colleague Senator Rispio and my colleagues from Inarahan, both of them, for, for making this amendment such a better and more improved amendment. So I'd like to thank them for that and ask the rest of my colleagues to support it and have them have no objection to this. Cisus Masi.
Thank you very much. If there's no objection to the amendment, amendment carries, okay. Your final amendment? Yeah, Tina, your final amendment, Senator Barnes?
Uh, Ms- Mr. Chair, again, I do have another amendment, and this is, um, an amendment that adds a new section to Chapter Six, Miscellaneous Provisions, as follows. And I'm gonna go ahead and read it. I hope everybody has a copy, it was passed out earlier.
You're gonna read the whole thing?
Well, you know, yes, uh, Mr. Chair, give me the five minutes to read this because it's really important. As the people from the south and the people from our, our, our island who, who really wanna protect the vital resources and the waters that we have, um, this, this, this provision, I'd like my colleagues to support. And it's the expenditure of public funds for landfill and the legislative findings in a tent, Illes Lutun Guan finds of the proposed landfill site identified as Danden Orleten is privately owned, and the government of Guam, upon final selection of the site, must actively make an effort to acquire it. Lack of property acquisition prior to the government of Guam's action is soliciting a landfill-specific site design would result in an increased appraised value of the property. Illes Lutun Guan additionally finds that the site-specific fiscal plan must be prepared that the details of the foreseeable costs for such project to include the property acquisition, site mitigation requirements, all infrastructure needs, including power, water, wastewater, road waste, et cetera, construction of the landfill itself, and a detailed budget for staffing. Therefore, it is the intent of the Illes Lutun Guan to save the government millions of dollars by ensuring that the government of Guam acquires the property for a new landford be- landfill before moving forward with site-specific expenditures. It is also the intent of the Illes Lutun Guan to determine the total cost associated with constructing a landfill and making it fully ready for use. Item B, prohibit- prohibition of expending of public funds all government of Guam agencies, departments, bureaus, boards, commissions, public corporations, autonomous and semi-autonomous agencies, including the A.B. Wampat International Airport Authority of Guam, the G- the Guam Power Authority, the Guam Housing and Urban Renewal Authority, the Guam Housing Corporation, the Guam Economic and Development and Commerce Authority, the Guam Memorial Hospital Authority, the, the University of Guam, the Jose Di Leon Guerrero Commercial Port, the Guam Water Works Authority, the Government of Guam Retirement Fund, and the Guam Visitors Bureau. All offices of the executive, legislative, and judicial branches and other entities and instrumentalities of the government of Guam are hereby prohibited from expending public funds on the site-specific preparation, design, work mitigation, infrastructure upgrade, or installation, or construction of a new landfill unless the government of Guam has acquired, fee simple ownership and officially recorded title of said property. I also have item C. Within sixty days of the effective date of this act, the Department of Public Works shall submit to the Imago Lahe Guan, Illes Lutun Guan, a financing plan enumerating in detail all costs associated with the construction of the new landfill, including, but not limited to, Mr. Chair, A, property acquisition, B, the environmental mitigation within the landfill, footprint, buffer zone, and other impacted areas, including, but not limited to, the water sources, river streams, tributaries, wetlands, surface water, groundwater, drainage, and runoff erosions. C, infrastructure needs, including, but not limited to, power, water, wastewater, and road weights, including climbing lanes for trucks, mitigation of blind curves, and other hazards. Shoulder widening road weights, widening addition of new traffic lanes, traffic management, drainage, and storm drainage improvements, access and utility roads, upgrading road markings and signage, and upgrading bridges. D, the land construction, and E, annual landfill operations and maintenance costs. Mr. Chair, I find that this provision is gravely needed. I believe that our government should not continue to expand funds when they don't even own property. It is important that before the government spends any kind of funding for anything, that they should at least own the property. And I'm asking that my colleagues take the time to support this measure and to protect the pristine water, the surface groundwater that we have in our beautiful island of Inarahan. Mr. Chair, I, uh, thank you for giving me this time, and I ask that my colleagues support this provision.
Okay, thank, thank you very much, Senator Tina Rose Munia Barnes. Is there any comment? Uh, Senator? Senator Guthertz?
Mr. Chairman, I just want to say that for my part, I support this amendment. And I'd like to just briefly express my perspective on it. For some time now, we've been trying to solicit information with respect to how the monies have been spent and where the monies have come from with respect to the current activity that's occurring in the south for a proposed landfill. And frankly, I haven't had much success in getting specific information about where the money has come from. The only thing I can say at this point is I do not believe that these monies that have been expended, and I believe over ten million dollars have been expended, have been expended with any authorization from this legislature. I also believe that it doesn't make a lot of sense to spend money this way without having any ownership of the site that is being looked at for this landfill. And I believe it's only prudent that we get this situation in order to make sure that the cart doesn't come before the horse. And that's what's happened in this case. The cart has come before the horse. We've been spending money without having any ownership of the land involved. And that's why I support this amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Guthertz. Senator Espadon?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, as I look at this, I understand what the author of this amendment is saying. And to a certain extent, I have to agree that I don't necessarily condone or agree with the way that we proceeded or, you know, the government has proceeded in terms of the new landfill down in Ledzon in Dandan. However, that being said, no matter how much of a dog this project has been to date, right? The fact remains that we're all, we have all been made aware in the past few days that Ordot, and of course, over the past twenty years, we've been made aware that Ordot needs to close. But now, more than ever, we are definite reaching, definitely reaching that crisis stage. For us to stop at this point in time at the site that's the only viable site at this point in terms of what's the solution after we reach maximum capacity at Ordot would be senseless. Because if we put a stop to this at this point in time, then that leaves us with no options at the end of two hundred days when Ordot supposedly is supposed to max out. So it would not make sense to do that. In other words, and not that I'm for putting the landfill down in Dandan, but in the bigger scheme of things, right? We're still going to have to figure out a way, where are we going to dispose of our trash? Now, if it's not going to be in Dandan, it might be someplace else. And within the meetings that we've had over the past several weeks over the Law Review Commission as for the executive order of the governor's office, right? We are reaching some middle ground as in terms of alternative places or alternate methodologies in which we can dispose of our trash. But in the absence of a final solution, or final agreement, or proposal to the governor, we can't put a stop to this right now. Because it's important that we have to at least maintain that option. Because if and when we do, in a very short period of time, need to close Ordot dump because it is maxed out, this right now is the only alternative. Now, right now, there are some hydrological studies being done as well. And again, that was at the request of some of the senators here, as well as myself and others, just to understand the water flow is associated with that. And again, I will publicly state that I'm not necessarily totally in favor of the Dandan location. But that shouldn't preclude me from objecting to this at this point in time because there's a bigger picture, a bigger necessity in terms of we're going to have to deal with our solid waste situation once Ordot maxes out in two hundred days, in about two hundred days. So I would have to, at this point in time, regretfully, you know, have to object.
Senator Wampat?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, you know, as I listen, of course, to our colleagues, and I have to appreciate, of course, the comments of the previous speaker who has a difficult task at really trying to find what will be the best thing, you see, to do. And so I just want to acknowledge that. Mr. Speaker, there's always been a problem with land taking. We continue to, this very day, fight with the federal government about the land takings. The original landowners have been fighting, the ancestral landowners have been fighting because they want to right the wrong that the government has done. But it doesn't necessarily mean that what we're doing, the local government, the government of Guam, what we're doing, makes it right. Because yes, we need, although we need to have a landfill, the government is, our government, the government of Guam, is notorious. For years, they've been taking lands from people using it without even any compensation. And we've seen ourselves time and time again. Every year, there would be a piece of legislation that would be introduced so that these individuals can get a land exchange for the properties that the government has taken. And yet, nothing is ever done. Few of our landowners have gotten a land exchange. But there's so many out there who still have not been compensated. And even before, to go back to before, even the military is going to do a buildup here in Guam. What are they doing? They're doing an EIS. They're doing an assessment. They're going and checking everything about the environment. I mean, and they're very methodical about it. And here we are. We're not even, we're not even asking that they look at all these things. Everything that's listed in subsection A. I mean, C, we talk about land acquisition, environmental mitigation, infrastructure needs, landfill construction, all those. None of those have even been answered. So how can we even move forward to taking a land that we don't even know? To going in and putting some monies in, government monies, the people's monies, on a property that we're saying that's where the landfill is going to be at? And we don't even own the property. Would anyone here allow anybody to come in and start doing construction on your yard without even acquiring your property? I don't think so. So the government is, you know, is not an exception to that rule at all. And I think the LRC would even come to realize that although this may be an alternative, there are many other alternatives. But even the LRC, it's a Law Review Commission that's going to set a policy for this government. And I hope that policy is not to go and take lands without compensation. To take lands and go in there and start to do construction work. We don't own the land. And we have no business going in there yet and doing some work when the land is not in the hands of the government of Guam. So I definitely support this amendment. And meanwhile, yes, depending on what happens further down from the Law Review Commission and the government then, and we have identified that, yes, we have to purchase the lands, then we'll go, we'll get to that point. We'll deal with it when we get to that, you know, that subject. But today, we don't own the land. And today, we should not even be in there working on the land. And lastly, we shouldn't even be using government funds for something we don't even own. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Senator Respechuel?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, I rise in full support of this amendment being offered by the Senator from Angiela. And this amendment basically speaks to the accountability of public funds. For some of us who have been monitoring the construction of the new landfill up at Dandan, Mr. Chairman, we've been very concerned. In the twenty-seventh Guam Legislature, I had held oversight over this area. And the commitment then was to let the scientific analysis drive the decision because at that time, a site was not selected. And every time an environmental impact study came back or results came back, that once you dig seven inches down, you already hid water, not even thinking about what the Codwell report showed that they produced, that area produces seven point seven million gallons of water a day. And Guam Water Works concerned that that area could be dammed for future water resources. You had all these impediments to the construction of the landfill in Dandan. This amendment basically says, before you spend any more money, first of all, you must do certain things. You must acquire the property. You must address environmental mitigation within the landfill footprint. You must address the infrastructure needs. You must address, you must have a landfill construction. I mean, there's absolutely no plan that's been accepted right now, whether it's the design of the new landfill or whether it's the acquisition of the property or whether it's the mitigation of all the roads, the two-lane highways to four-lane highways once you pass Jonah. How can this legislature continue to sit idly by and allow the Department of Public Works, allow this government of Guam, to continue to spend public monies absent any legislative appropriation? Right now, they've spent, this process has spent twelve, ten million dollars in total, absent any legislative appropriation. And I, along with other members of the minority, diligently sit through the LRC Commission, the LRC right now. And we believe that this process is supposed to analyze all the other viable options. At that LRC, I requested from the chairman who has the oversight here, if that commission can send a strong message to the administration to stop the work at Dandan, to stop spending money because of the governor's really sincere in addressing all the possible options, including our current contractual obligations, then he would not continue to spend money there at Dandan. But instead, the work continues down there, and we're supposed to assess what other viable options there are. You know, that fact that Ordot dump has two hundred more days, I hope they'll light a fire under us. That Ordot dump should have been closed since nineteen eighty-six, twenty-one years ago. And yet, we act as if though we're not in a state of emergency. I understand there's current process for the LRC, Mr. Chairman, but we have opportunity here to secure confidence and have accountability in public funds. We've even written letters to the Attorney General, which he has yet to respond, asking, how can these people have the authority to spend all this money absent any legislative appropriations? And what this amendment is attempting to do here simply, it's not saying no to Dandan. I think the senator who's moving this amendment, along with all of us here, has been very careful. And although I'm saying no, this amendment says, be more responsible in how you spend taxpayer money. Stop spending money unless you do your due diligence. Right now, Public Works is saying we're going to spend in excess of two hundred twenty-nine million dollars. How can we allow that? How can we allow that to continue to go on absent all these requirements that this amendment proposes? So anybody who opposes no to this amendment really does not want to have any accountability of public funds. And that's my conclusion. Thank you.
All right. Any other speakers? Senator Pengalina?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, I think the two key words in this amendment is site-specific. You know, there are many things that the Department of Public Works needs to do in order to construct a landfill. And it does not present them any obstacle to doing those things as long as they're not tied to a site-specific design. Because if you do site-specific design and you don't choose that site, then you've wasted money. And you can't guarantee that you're going to go to a specific site unless you have a right to that site. And until such time that you acquire that right, then you're really gambling. You're gambling with the people's money in terms of designing for that site when you may not go there. Either that, or you're trying to backdoor your way into that site by trying to force the legislature, the community, to say, we have no choice. We must go there because we spent all this money to design there. You know, like my good colleague from Inarahan says, always says, you know, it's like building a foundation. We can't be building that foundation in property we don't own. Because what if the owner says, take your foundation and leave? And you've sunk all that money in there? Or buy me out at a certain price and so forth? So we really can't, you know, back ourselves into a position of making a decision on a specific site because we can't turn back anymore. And this just says, before we get to that point, we're very close to that point now. After spending ten million dollars, we're very close to saying, we can't throw this away. We've got to go there. That's the only place we go because we've spent. You know, it may be too late, but I think we still have an opportunity here to say, don't spend any more money until you're absolutely certain that number one, you own the property and that's the place you're going to. Especially with the, as the good chairman of the Legislative or Law Review Commission is saying, they're thinking and they're saying now that they may have alternate sites, that it may be more feasible to go to alternate sites. So why do we want to continue to spend money on a site when even the Law Commission that's been established by the governor is saying, hey, we're taking a look at other places, other alternatives and other sites as possible? So we don't want to gamble. And I think that the way that we're spending the money and moving in that direction, we're gambling right now. And the only people that are going to lose when we gamble are the people of Guam. And this just says, no gambling. Thank you.
All right. Any other speakers on the amendment? Senator Shimizu, I thought you might be prompted.
Thank you. No, I wanted to be the foundation speaker. You know, ladies and gentlemen, let's look at what this is doing. There's a story that I tell people about, you know, this issue. It's, for example, my wife says, Dave, please build me my dream home. So I went and I called Laguania and Kustobo to do an A and E, do all the studies, build it all up. And then they completed and the architect and engineering did a beautiful rendering. And I paid money for that. I paid ten percent of the total cost of building. So I went over to my lovely wife and said, hon, here's the dream house. And says, oh, thank you. But we're going to put it in our property, right? Right in our property? No, as the world, para it's a got to the property, ti zota. How does, how do we go and start building plans, spending money? And then we're going to tell the people of Guam that we spent so far just on the study? Ten million dollars on somebody else's property? That is insane. This amendment will hold this government on accountability of the taxpayer. It's not going to delay. And yes, delay it because number one, there was a public law earlier that designated Watali and Mala, an environmental impact study. Everything was done. That is my property. That's what my wife would tell me. Build the house on our property. Why are we doing a design on somebody else's property? And to add insult to injury, that whole area is a watershed. We have two types of water system here in Guam. We have the northern lens, which is the aquifer. If the aquifer is impacted adversely as a result of non-point pollution or population increase, then we need to lucky hand them, catch the water, the surface water, because down in that area is Oklaish material. It all runs out to Fena. It all runs out to Uga. We got Pinaga, Sasa, about six different waterways. I can imagine our own hydrologist. In fact, you know what they did? They said, can you please build us a road? Because it's so slippery because there's a lot of water and we can't get in. We can't get in there. We got to build the, so that our trucks can go in there. I can imagine. We were up there, as soon as we put down, Uncle Chagla put down a fishing line, water. If we destroyed the water in that area because it's going to delay, then we're destroying and killing this island. If there was any delay, was removing it from Watali and Mala. That place is an industrial park. It's already disturbed. Ledzon is a virgin pristine land. It is a PUD, a Plan Unit Development. It did not donate for an industrial activity such as this. But yet, we continue to condone spending on something that is not our property. We don't even have respect for the property owners. You know, we don't have to say, we're going to put like a sanitary landfill on your property. And you know what's interesting thing about it from the briefings I've gotten? Originally, the footprint of the sanitary landfill was really nice and crisp. Now it keeps going this way because we have to get away from the wetlands. It's wiggling. They're trying to force this on us and try to scapa, if you know, quintus. Mas kaka pa is agan honum. Lokomobula estina, mono jungza maholum, todo is agan beneno, is agan is a duck. You know, if we destroy this, night, todo zum alung that Guam is my home. Kuna baba ihanum, man mapus. You know, if we destroy this, night todo zumalum, that Guam is my home, guna baba hanum, manmappus. Zahita manyagani hagas, centuries old. This is home. This is not only where I live. So I ask my colleagues, this is common sense, katsum. You don't spend money in, in a property area where it's not yours. My family is right. Why are you doing all the plants? And we can't build the house, like Senator Pangalina said. They're going to come back to us and say, we spent so much money. That is not, it's the quality of life. And we have to be accountable. We have to hold. So while I have time, I want to, I think I have an amendment to this, and it'll be on Section E justice, it's already written. Where is it, please? Can I take a one-minute break, and you're just going to give it to me?
Yes, Senator, your, your time is up, actually. I'll la for the amendment, and then after that, we'll conclude. We'll be in recess.
Thank you. On the amendment, um, is, does everybody have the amendment? No, please, one minute.
The committee, the whole, is back in order. Senator Shimizu, on your amendment?
Thank you, sir. I've got another five minutes on my amendment. My amendment is to add a, a Section D, a D after E, after the annual landfill. And it basically says, D, the Director of Public Works, the Administrator of Guam Environmental Protection Agency, and any other head of the executive branch or agency that has expended funds on the new landfill shall, within 30 days of passes of this act, provide a detailed report containing specific information on the expenditure and source of public funds used in support of establishing a, a landfill. Mr. Speaker, I proctored this amendment simply because of the fact that, you know, in order to start getting these kinds of information, it is not being given freely, and, uh, uh, then I would have to revert to, or, or any, any citizen would have to revert to a FOIA, a Freedom of Information Act. And, and then that's when we try to force the government to give us those information. What I like to do is that with this amendment, it makes it mandatory, uh, should this amendment pass, that the, uh, that, you know, the government just tells us where they're spending our money as it relates to this, because the amount is no chump change. You know, there's no chump change. $10 million is no chump change. So, you know, the government is in a dire financial aid, and in, in, in some areas where there is no money, for, for example, for, uh, medical, uh, uh, off-island care or so forth, because there's no money for that, there's no money for the refunds to be able to get people, their, their monies out because of emergency, there's no, um, money for, for, um, this and that and so forth. Vendor payments, you know? Senator Zizaki is very, very concerned about vendor payments, you know? Maybe if they just didn't spend some, I think maybe our vendors will be able to get paid so that, um, out of, uh, uh, this, uh, amount, and, uh, and be able to pay their own bills. So this, um, is to make sure that, um, we make it as a matter of law that they do, within 30 days of the passes of this act, provide the legislature with that legislation. Thank you.
All right. On the amendment to the amendment, Senator Munya Barnes.
Sidos maasi, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, I support, fully support the amendment to the amendment, and I share that support, Mr. Chair, because as I continue as a policymaker, and as I listen to the information that is being provided, uh, by the management of, of Public Works, I continue to be disappointed from writing letters, to asking FOIA on the Freedom of Information Act, and to just literally receiving information on a weekly, uh, uh, basis. This information continues to not be provided, and on the other hand, spending continues to happen, and on the other hand, the Director of Public Works continues to say, this project's going to go on. And my take, Mr. Speaker, is, I mean, Mr. Chair, is that if this provision is included, then maybe the people of Guam will have a breakdown of the 10, and if I'm not mistaken, it's probably up to $12 million as we speak today of what has been expended. And, Mr. Chair, I only ask that if we can take the time to receive the information, then maybe things might be different. But until then, that information has not been provided. Until then, we have not gotten the answers from the FOIA that has been requested, and until then, sometimes, we really need to include this amendment so that accountability and transparency can be adhered to. So I support the amendment, uh, to my amendment, and I, I, I really hope my colleagues support the same. Thank you.
All right. Any other speakers on the amendment to the amendment? Senator Guthers.
Ms. Chairman, I think this amendment to the amendment is a very good, uh, action. I think it will reinforce the overall amendment, and I think it will finally bring us some transparency in this whole process. And, uh, I'm really surprised, up until this point in time, that we have not been able to get this information, despite repeated requests. So finally, through legislative action, which will become public policy, I hope, we will finally find out where this money has come from and how it has been spent. Thank you.
Thank you. Senator Spitzel?
You know, Ms. Chairman, you just got to at least give us credit for trying. But we'll continue to try when it comes to a public, ensuring the public trust and accountability for all the millions of dollars that were spent in this area. The amendment offered by the Senator from Malolo, uh, makes a lot of sense. Makes a lot of sense because it strengthens what this main amendment is attempting to do here by basically requiring the Director of Public Works, Administrator of EPA, and any other head of executive branch or agency that has expended funds relative to the site selected at Dandan, must submit this report to the legislature within 30 days. Now, what's wrong with this? What's wrong with the legislative attempt to try to force our government of Guam to justify where these taxpayers' monies have been spent so far? And if they're true to their convictions, Mr. Speaker, that, Mr. Chairman, that these monies were appropriately spent, then why are they hiding? Why does this administration continue to hide? Why does this administration continue to act disingenuous when it comes to resolving this historic issue with how we, how we dispose of our trash and how we manage it by way of an integrated management, a solid waste management plan? This amendment would do something that we've been attempting to do for quite some time now, is try to ask these respective agencies to let us know where and how they've spent this money. Today, it's been like pulling teeth. We've also asked the Attorney General to help us in this effort. The Attorney General says that it's very difficult because Public Works is her client. She represents the government. So who then, Mr. Chairman, represents the people? The people have not had representation in this whole site-selection process. The people of Guam have not had a voice in how these public monies are to be spent. They spent it anyway. They don't have a voice by way of the legislature, because we've never authorized any appropriation to spend these amount of monies. I'm, I'm hoping that the amendment stays, uh, in, and I'm hoping that the main amendment passes, because ultimately, we want to count for all this money that's been spent. Ultimately, we don't want to spend a single penny more until these various requirements have been satisfied. Now, what's wrong with that? Do you think the US District Court's going to now say, oh, the legislature, by passing this in the Budget Act, sends a very terrible message to us and we're going to proceed with foreclosure or, or federal receivership? Do you really think that the, that the US District Court will have a problem because the local government wants to hold these people accountable for all the monies they spend? Now, the people will be watching to see who exactly would be voting against this amendment, who exactly will be voting against, uh, the main amendment, and they'll make up their own minds, Mr. Chairman. They'll make up their own minds. I've already made my own mind to support this effort because it deals with public accountability. How can we say that's wrong?
All right. Any other speakers on the main amendment, or the amendment to the amendment? If there are none? All right. Are there, there's, is there an objection? No objection? Okay. Without objection, amendment to the amendment fails. On the main amendment, that was the amendment to the amendment. It did pass. Oh, did I say fail? I apologize. It did, it did pass. Um, on the main amendment? Say again? Okay. Are there any other speakers on the main amendment? If there are none, on the main amendment?
I can still speak on the main amendment?
No, you're, you've concluded your time. You've con-
I'm still speaking.
No, you spoke your five minutes already. If there are no other speakers? I'm sorry, your amendment just passed. There is no further discussion on your amendment?
I don't think so.
That's correct. Okay. So you want to speak again on the main amendment?
I said I can't.
Do you want to?
I can't speak on the main amendment?
Yeah, we already set up, uh, tight frames.
But I, I, I just-
I'll give you 30 seconds, okay, Senator Shimizu?
30 seconds?
I'll give you 30 seconds.
30 seconds. My dear colleagues, 30 seconds is all I have to ask you guys to do the right thing. Would you allow any other agencies to go on a, just a spending spree? Would you allow it in your own oversight? No way, OC. No way, OC. We can't have a double standard here. You are either for accountability or you're not. If you vote against this, my 30 second is up. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. To close on the amendment, Senator Munya Barnes.
You know, uh, Mr. Chair, I thank my colleagues who spoke passionately in support of this amendment, and as I continue to take pride in knowing that the people voted for me, because I can exemplify to our community about true accountability and transparency. Mr. Chair, this policymaking body continues to pride itself on accountability, continues to talk about transparency, continues to talk about making sure that the money that our people of Guam receive, that the government runs and, and manages, the funding that it receives on the people in the proper manner. And what better way for this policymaking body tonight to show to our people of Guam that we pride ourselves on knowing that if we don't owe something, if we don't acquire it, if it is not ours to, to give, then we have no business, no business, spending not $1 million, not $5 million, not even $10 million, and now we're possibly looking at $12 million. We have no business, no business, Mr. Chair. And this people, the people of Guam, our people voted for us to make sure that there is true accountability and transparency. And as my good colleagues spoke about the protections and the wants and desires, you know what? If Dandan is good for its water, then let us expound on the usage. If it is going to be good for, for the landfill, like some of the government agencies says, then let it happen, but not at the expense of spending more when it doesn't belong to us. And, Mr. Chair, the people of Guam need to know, as we continue to look for funding for medical needs, for safety needs, for educational needs, for educational needs that don't even have air cons, schools that don't have air cons, need repairs, for our safety needs, needs, because our people can't even afford medical insurance. Our own personal home needs, things are driving, ta, we're spending more today for everything. And as we look, as policymakers, to try to make it better for our community, what business do we have, what, what, to spend money on something we don't own? I, I ask my colleagues, Mr. Chair, Mr. Vice Speaker, I ask my colleagues that they take the time to show the people of Guam that we are responsible, that we believe in the accountability, that we believe in the transparency, and if the government entity who's responsible for spending things that they are not supposed to spend, then let's, let's put their, the feet, the, their feet to the fire, and let's make sure that what they do is right. And if they're not doing it right, let's make sure we correct that wrong. And right now, Mr. Chair, there is a wrong. There is, there is a definite wrong. And I know my time is up, I can expound on this all night, because I know that as a policymaker, I know that when we spend money that is not ours to spend because we don't own the property that we're trying to deal with, then we have no business. So I ask, I ask my colleagues, Mr. Chair, to please take the time, find it in your hearts, to know that if we pride ourselves on accountability and transparency, then let's do the right thing by our people. Let's vote for this amendment. And if it is the right place to put it, then, you know, let's, let's fight, but it's not right now. So let us, let us, as policymakers, vote for the right thing. Vote for this amendment because it puts everything on a standstill until we can acquire that that belongs to us. Thank you.
On the main amendment, uh, there's been objection.
Uh, Ms. Chairman, I move to recess so that, uh, we can get some information, more information. Move to recess.
Um, we have a vote before us, we're going to go and dispose of the, uh-
Somebody have to dispense of my motion to recess.
We'll, we'll take a one-minute recess, and with time, we'll come back for a vote. It'll be a one-minute recess. Coming back after a dinner break, at which point, we'll vote on the amendment before us, and we'll resume on the miscellaneous provisions. Okay, we'll be coming back in about, um, one hour. All right? Thank you.